You all please stand and join me in pledging allegiance to our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and would the city clerk please call roll?
Councilmember Fox. Councilmember Bill de la Pena is absent at this time. Councilmember Irwin?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Gillette?
Here.
Mayor Glancy?
And here. We have no request for continuance of any public hearing or agenda item, so we will now begin the special presentation portion of our city council meeting. Give me a moment to get down to the podium. Thanks. Okay, I'd like to invite Antonio Gallo up to the podium with me. You know, every decade since 1790, the Census Bureau has conducted a constitutionally mandated census, which is designed to help our leaders make important decisions. So we are here tonight for the City of Thousand Oaks to express its support of the census this year. And the mic is yours to give us a little bit of rundown on the census if you would.
Well, thank you very much. I come bearing gifts. There's bags that I gave to the clerk, so she'll be handing you the bags. Let me just say thank you for having us here today. We really enjoy the support that you guys are giving us. I'd like to say a special thanks to Mr. Prescott, who's been really helpful for us. Just a quick information, the census is coming up soon. It's April 1st, 2010, which is a little more than a year away. Right now, we are undertaking what's called address canvassing, where we're sending enumerators to verify our list addresses that we already have. Just three, quick three points. This year's census is going to be simple. There's only 10 forms, I mean 10 questions, 10 questions on a questionnaire. It'll be safe, very confidential. If any census employee releases any information, personal information, they will be fined $250,000, and they will be incarcerated for five years. And as the mayor said, it's really important because it determines the amount of money that your city may get. Every year, the federal government gives $300 billion to state and local agencies. So it's really important that your citizens fill out the questionnaire and mail it back to the Census Bureau. Thank you very much.
Antonio, thank you very much. And here's a proclamation expressing our support of the census. Thank you for all that you do.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you again.
Thank you very much. May I add, you guys have a very lovely city.
I'd like to now invite Mary Olson, the general manager for KCLU, down. Good colleague.
I brought my posse.
Wow, how very nice. How are you? Nice to see you.
Nice to see you.
Before coming to KCLU, Mary worked as the National Promotions Director for Ticketmaster in Los Angeles. And under her leadership, KCLU reporters have done a stellar job, the entire KCLU staff. You've created a dynamic team that has set an example for objective journalism, and you're to be saluted for that. The award-winning programming provides high-quality, comprehensive, local and national public radio programming. And I hear a lot of very good comment about the station, and I do listen to it. Launched in '94 as part of KCLU, the credits in the radio industry are impressive. You have grown to cover Ventura and Santa Barbara counties. Over the past year alone, you have received six Golden Mic Awards, which is awesome. Throughout development, they remain true to their mission of providing informative educational program. Mary, congratulations on your many achievements. We'd like to recognize KCLU by presenting the commendation. And if you would introduce your staff?
Yes.
And say a few words.
Thank you so much. Oh. Lance and Jim, surrounded by handsome men.
Thank you. Mayor Glancy, thank you so very much. Thank you for your kind words. Thank you to each and every one of the council members here. I look around and I see so many longtime friends. Thank you so much. A special thank you to Scott Mitnick, city manager, who's also been so very supportive. I would like to introduce, I'm proud to say, my colleagues and my friends. This is Lance Roscoe, who leads the news team at KCLU. Could you come closer to me? Thank you, Lance. The station is driven in large part from Lance and his wonderful reporting, and we congratulate him on his awards. And my other colleague and friend, Mr. Jim, thank you, Jim, Jim Rondo, who is the Program Director and the Director of Operations. And on behalf of the entire KCLU team and my friends and colleagues who are here, we just want to thank you for this honor. We're humbled by it, and we're deeply appreciative. And we are so thankful that we're licensed and right here in the City of Thousand Oaks. So thank you for your fine work. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor Glancy.
And I saw Carol Nussbaum leave the room just a moment ago. Who's Carol? Carol, come on up. Carol visited us in January for a commendation for Cabrillo's winning six Ovation Awards, and is here again tonight to give us a sneak preview of the next edition. The mic is yours.
Thanks so much, Honorable Mayor and city council people. So good to see you. And critical staff and friends, we are thrilled to be here. When I last left you, we were breaking up as hard to do with a dynamite cast. And I might mention that our, one of our leads, Leslie Ann Spencer, is on her way to Broadway now and has been cast in the marvelous Wondourets. And now we have somebody coming from Broadway to be in our spectacle of all spectacles, Forty Second Street. As you may know, in Forty Second Street, in the world we live in, we're in the money. Or so it goes in the song. And it is the ultimate glitz and glam show. It was actually created during the Depression era so that everybody could feel good about going forward in the future, much like we are feeling good here at Cabrillo and Thousand Oaks about all the wonderful things we have going on as we proceed through some challenging times. Forty Second Street is indeed the spectacle of all spectacles, and in that regard, we've brought in the ultimate Forty Second Street guy, who is our director. His name is John Ingstrom. And he was there on opening night of Forty Second Street, dancing away as the dance captain, when unfortunately, that brilliant choreographer, Gower Champion, passed away. And almost like a production in itself, John was there to anchor everybody in Forty Second Street. And he has come from there to our magnificent theater to direct Forty Second Street for us. And in so doing, he is absolutely true to that show, and we've brought in 327 costumes from the original revival and original national tour. And I can tell you, they're going to knock your socks off, along with our cast and about 124 people who were involved in the production of this show. We have with us today Jeffrey Parsons, who is our Billy Lawler, and of course, Cassie Silver, Peggy Sawyer. They're accompanied by Chris Kimbler, our in-house musician guru. And they're going to sing for you, young and healthy.
I know a bundle of humanity. She's about so high. I'm nearly driven to insanity when she passes by. She's a sunny little honey, but oh, so hard to kiss. I'll try to overcome her vanity, and then I'll tell her this. I'm young and healthy, and you've got charms. It would really be a sin not to have you in my arms. I'm young and healthy, and so are you. When the moon is in the sky, tell me what am I to do? If I could hate ya, I'd keep away. But that ain't my nature. I'm full of vitamin A. Say, say, I've got an idea. You know, it's your turn now. Go to it, kid.
To what?
To your first notes on Broadway.
I'm young and healthy. And you've got charms. It would really be a sin not to have you in my arms. I'm young and healthy, and so are you. When the moon is in the sky, tell me what am I to do? If I could hate ya, I'd keep away. But that ain't my nature. I'm full of vitamin A. Say, I'm young and healthy. So let's be bold. In a year or two or three, maybe we will be too old.
Thank you both very much. And Carol, thank you once again.
That's Jeffrey Parsons. You might recognize him from Seven Brides. And Cassie Silver was one of the finalists for the Broadway production of Legally Blonde: The Search for Elwood's. I'd also like to acknowledge my mega-talented artistic director, who's here with us this evening, Louis Wilkenfeld. And of course, I must genuinely thank city council, everybody here, for helping us so much and being so supportive. Cabrillo just loves you. Thank you.
And thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Irwin?
Carol, before you leave, can you give us the dates once more? I'm not sure if you gave them, but...
March 27th to April 5th. We have 10 performances, and we've added a 11:00 AM matinee on Wednesday. And it's free parking. Come join us.
Thank you, Carol.
Would the city clerk announce? Oh, pardon me. Go ahead, Mr. Mit.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm sorry, I got a little off schedule here. I wanted to just say a couple of words to Mary Olson and her two reporters who are here at KCLU. It is a privilege and an honor for the city to be the home of an NPR radio station, and we take it for granted, I think. And we owe it to you to say thank you for being here and for all that you do, because we know it's a labor of love, but it really helps with the city's reputation and has put us on the map. And we have an outstanding partnership with the university, and we look forward to doing more things with not just the university, but the radio station as well. And that's why we invited them down here, because these men and women, they've been recognized locally, regionally, and nationally for their talents, and we can't underscore how lucky we are to have them here. So with that, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mitnick. Now would the city clerk please announce public comments?
This is the time and place for public comments. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding items on the agenda or on a subject within the city's jurisdiction. Pursuant to council standards of operation, the mayor may assist any speaker from straying into areas not within the city's jurisdiction. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole. Under state law, issues discussed under public comments can have no action unless listed on the agenda and may be referred to the city manager for administrative action or scheduled on a subsequent agenda. All documents for city council and the official city records should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking, and speakers are requested to state their name and city of residence for the record. Six people have presented cards and pursuant to council standard, speakers are allowed three minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you very much. The first speaker will be Patricia Johnson, followed by Kitty Dill, followed by Billy Martin. And when you get up to the podium, please give us your name and your city of residence. Thank you.
Yes, my name is Patricia Johnson. I live in the Westlake side of Thousand Oaks. Good evening, Mayor Glancy, and esteemed council, and all your great support staff. We come here just to alert you to what the activities are for the Arts Council at Canejo Valley. It's quite interesting that I think we're unique in the United States. We run a wonderful 28-year collaboration with the City of Thousand Oaks, Park &amp; Rec, and then with us. I believe we are unique, and we work very well together. This year is a wonderful year for us, because, believe it or not, the Arts Council is 40 years old and getting younger every year, maybe. So we've really loaded up with some special activities, including a celebration for our 40th year. The arts are alive and living and energetic and planning in 2009. The economy isn't, but the arts are, as exemplified by Cabrillo. Coming up, my esteemed new member to the Arts Council Board, Kitty Dill, who has been a wonderful blessing for us with her energy and her talents. She's going to say a few words about one of our upcoming projects that we're doing, a premier one. Also coming up in April 1st is our Hang with the Best Show, which is for the kids, from eighth grade through 12th. I'm always amazed. I can't draw worth a lick. I can't sculpt worth a darn. I can't sing, but that's it. But when the kids turn out their talents and share them with all of us, we're really blessed. We are very lucky to have the arts and at least giving some support in the schools. And then we also are having our third writing workshop, and this one is on poetry. We haven't supported the literary arts much in our area, so that's where we're turning our attention. And since the time isn't going, does that mean I can keep talking? I'm going to turn it over. No, you sound like my husband. I'm going to turn it over to Kitty Dill. She has something to show you and to share with you.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor Glancy and esteemed council colleagues, listeners, audience members. The arts can't exist without each and every one participating in some way, whether it's enjoying the arts in your home, or in the school, or in the community. And I have to say, I come to you today as a still very proud recipient of a 2005 Excellence in the Arts Award from the city's Thousand Oaks Arts Commission. I can't believe somebody nominated me for that. I thought nobody was paying any attention. And when they called to tell me I'd won, I'd said, "I'm sorry. I'm really honored to be called, but you've nominated the wrong person." Here I am today, thankful that we have so much to present. We have so many artistic veins to mine. I want to call your attention, and Linda Lawrence, who's been so helpful, in fact, all of your staff is superb that we get to work with regularly, Tom Mitzi, Stacy Park, the city manager's office. We thank each and every one of them, as well as the council. Linda is going to be passing out a poster wrapped in a red bow for you about March 22nd, 4:00 to 8:00 PM, Art Bus, Art Night 2009. Now, this is a big deal to us, because this is the first time we've done this kind of a venture. We are doing it in conjunction with the City of Thousand Oaks, and Stacy's been a wonderful resource, as have others, the council. We're doing it in conjunction with Canejo Recreation and Park District, which is a firm supporter of the Arts Council as well. Why is this so unusual? All the people who buy tickets are going to be treated to an entire evening of chauffeuring aboard a double-decker London Red Bus, hence the red ribbon. You're going to pile on at Hillcrest Center, leave sharply at 4:15 PM on Sunday, March 22nd. Go to the Thousand Oaks Community Gallery, which is a city gallery, for the opening art exhibit of the Westlake Village Art Guild and their reception. Then, we're going to go after entertainment, the Arts Council has provided, onto the cavalry. Then, their entertainment there, too, didgeridoo player. Final stop will be back at Hillcrest for Wild Roots, a belly dancing group. We hope anyone and everyone who's interested in supporting this venture will help us. Finally, President Johnson, who puts in so many hours, mentioned our literary workshop that's coming up, our third one. This is March 25th, 7:00 to 9:00 PM, at the Hillcrest Center. Credential teacher and poet Lucia Lemieux will be presenting this, and it is for everyone of any age who is interested in writing, published or unpublished. We thank you for your ongoing support. The kind of volunteers that work on the Arts Council couldn't do it without each and every one of you. It is truly a collaborative effort, and we thank you very much for allowing us to work with you.
Kitty, thank you, and Patricia very much. Appreciate you being here. Next speaker, Billy Martin, followed by Randy Work.
Not sure which side to present to. My name is Billy Martin. I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks since 1976. And I'm here to talk today about the Copper Curtain on Civic Arts Plaza, at one time an agenda item for the city. The Copper Curtain, I'd like to say first, is not a piece of public art. It is, in fact, the largest, most prominent billboard in Southern California. It is TO's window to the world, to the 100,000-plus drivers who pass it on a daily basis. And what it says right now is, oops. What was constructed was not what the artist had designed. I'm not sure how many people are familiar, but the artist designed cables with rectangular leaves that were to wave in the wind originally. And at some point in the process, it was decided that those waving leaves would be a distraction, I believe, to the passersby on the freeway. And no offense, but having bureaucrats decide public art would be akin to having Andy Warhol do the budget. At any rate, in 2000, in the year 2000, March 17th, in one week, it'll be nine years, an RFP was issued by the City of Thousand Oaks to try and come up with an alternative to what is on the wall right now. And I presented this idea. And the idea distinguished itself in a couple of different ways. For one, it utilized the current structure, meaning that the structure did not have to be taken down at a cost to the city and an embarrassment to the city that approved the art in the first place. It creates a palette for 1,000 aluminum oak trees, which would be dedicated to individual people who, for memorial purposes, for businesses, and sold at a cost of $1,000 a piece. The whole piece would cost, with promotion, as much as a quarter of a million dollars, and raised at 1,000 times 1,000, a million dollars. So I think that distinguishes it, not necessarily for its art. The art itself was designed by one of Thousand Oaks' favorite sons. He and I were the project managers for the City of Westlake Village branding. And my feeling is that this is the cornerstone to the branding project, which is the latest issue of expenditures towards city promotion. I'd like to see it reconsidered on its merit. I can see I've got 10 seconds. And I'd like to thank everybody for the opportunity to bring this up again, and let's have a wonderful year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Randy Work, followed by Greg Amodi, followed by Suzanne Duckett.
My name is Randy Work, and I'm a resident here in Thousand Oaks. And city council, Mayor Glancy, good evening. I'm here Saturday. I received an award from Thousand Oaks Little League, as some of you know. It was a lifetime achievement award for work that I've done there for many, many years. And one of the parents came up to me after I got the award and said, "Wasn't there something about a park that was going to be built that your son and I, my son and his son played T-ball, and they were five years old? They're now 19, and the park still hasn't been built? So please, I know you guys have allocated some money towards the park in partnership with the Park &amp; Rec. Stay the course. Let's get the park built. We all know it's Lang Ranch Park. We've been waiting and waiting and waiting." And my son is now 19, second year of college. His son is 19, second year of college. Our kids will not play on that park. But the young kids that were there, the T-ballers, you saw how cute they were, the little five, six-year-old kids. It's great. And now, I've been involved in new sports here in the valley for almost 20 years now. And now I'm a coach at Thousand Oaks High School, and we need that park. We desperately need that park. So please, let's get the park built. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Work. Greg Amodi, followed by Suzanne Duckett.
Thank you, honorable mayor and city council. My name is Greg Amodi. I reside at 2679 Capella Way in Thousand Oaks. Just want to briefly state that in regards to the park, I live in the Verdegris, which is diagonally across from the park, and I, too, have been waiting many years. My son was all of five years old when he went to TO Little League, and is now 14 and a freshman at Westlake High School. And I've been waiting that long for it. But most importantly, the park gives us a venue for families to gather, to hold picnics, to bike ride, to just do all things that I think our community represents, which is the core of good, solid, family upbringing. And, you know, we've been waiting some time for that park, and I'd like to see it happen. As Randy had said, please stay the course. It's not only important to me personally, but I believe it's a very, very important thing for Thousand Oaks itself. There isn't anything the city has done that, in my opinion, has been better than just good. We do great things, and this would be just another great thing for all of us to do as a city. We are known for one of the safest, if not the safest, cities in the country, and I proudly say that. And a park of this nature would only contribute to the quality that we are as a city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Suzanne Duckett.
Suzanne Duckett, Thousand Oaks. First two good things, I always like to start with the good things. And now, I was going to do one negative thing, but now I'm going to do two negative things after the last two speakers. The first two good things. I want to thank you so much for Site I, which is coming up on the Agenda 9B. And for, a lot of us have worked for Site I as open space up at Dos Vientos. So I want to thank you for bringing that to fruition. The second good thing is, I also want to thank you for putting the branding of the city on the back burner. If you cannot find somebody here in the city or in our local area to do the branding, I'd like you to think about taking it to one of our state colleges or state universities, like Cal Poly, who has a graphic design or graphic communications department that would love to see this as probably a senior project. So thank you for putting that lower on the agenda, but keeping it up in your brain. Negative. As Randy had said, please stay the course. It's not only important to me personally, but I believe it's a very, very important thing for Thousand Oaks itself. There isn't anything the city has done that, in my opinion, has been better than just good. We do great things, and this would be just another great thing for all of us to do as a city. We are known for one of the safest, if not the safest, cities in the country, and I proudly say that. And a park of this nature would only contribute to the quality that we are as a city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Suzanne Duckett.
First two good things, I always like to start with the good things. And now, I was going to do one negative thing, but now I'm going to do two negative things after the last two speakers. The first two good things. I want to thank you so much for Site I, which is coming up on the Agenda 9B. And for, a lot of us have worked for Site I as open space up at Dos Fiantos. So I want to thank you for bringing that to fruition. The second good thing is, I also want to thank you for putting the branding of the city on the back burner. If you cannot find somebody here in the city or in our local area to do the branding, I'd like you to think about taking it to one of our state colleges or state universities, like Cal Poly, who has a graphic design or graphic communications department that would love to see this as probably a senior project. So thank you for putting that lower on the agenda, but keeping it up in your brain. Negative. Claudia Bill de La Pena being overlooked for Mayor Pro Tem. Every one of you comes up in an orderly manner for Mayor Pro Tem and Mayor. We out here do not vote for you. It's an orderly, done in an orderly progression. Claudia being overlooked is discrimination in the first degree. You need the finger. And every single one of you who did not give her that, this, her due agenda position needs the finger. The last thing is, we do not need a ballpark on land that's not stable. I do not want to see any park built on unstable ground. So I do not want to see that ballpark put where these two last gentlemen talked about putting that park. You can put it somewhere else, where they have, where there is stable land, not at that Lang Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have now City and Redevelopment Agency Consent Calendar, and we have one speaker in that. It is a Mr. Schultz. Well, Evy Schultz? Mrs. Schultz. I couldn't read your first name.
Sorry.
Please give us your name and city of residence. Thank you.
My name is Evy Schultz. I am a 30-year resident of Thousand Oaks, 1389 Sheffield Place. I'm here in support of the Lang Ranch Park. The park, as you know, was proposed over 40 years ago, long before homes were ever And again, as you know, the ERI and the certified, the master plan, was approved back in June of this, of last year. The park is really there not just for ball fields, but it's for bridle trails, walking trails, volleyball, basketball, tennis courts, baseball fields, picnic benches, and playgrounds. So it's not just about ball fields. It's really needed at the east end of Thousand Oaks, as we don't have as many recreation areas. And Thousand Oaks Little League needs a permanent home. I'm sure you guys are tired of hearing us say it over and over again. Over the past eight years, at Kalina, where we, is our temporary home, which was supposed to be back 40 years ago, the gym has been built, the Boys and Girls Club has been built, and we just, you know, have less and less room. We serve approximately 600 families, and this project, which was voted by the City Council in the Tark District, was over a year ago. And of approximately 125 acres of land, 55 will be landscape and only 25 will be developed for actual use. So it's really, I believe, if I have my figures correct, approximately 20% of the land will actually be utilized on a consistent basis. So I just hope you guys continue it on. And again, like Randy, my son, who played in Thousand Oaks Little League, is 26 years old. I have no, anything in the game, but maybe I'll have grandchildren, so we'll see. Thank you.
And thank you very much. I'd like to point out to the council that there is a memo revising resolution recommendation on 7I in the supplemental packet. So that being said, the will of the council here? Is there one?
Are we on the consent calendar? Did you just?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll move the consent calendar.
Motion to move the consent calendar, any comment? Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Item 9A.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. Tonight, members of the Ventura County Fire Protection District and I are again before you to bring the third Fire Services Operational and Financial Review update. Since 2006, the Fire District and city staffs have collaborated on a Fire Services Operational and Financial Review. They developed the initial RFP and reviewed the cementals, selected the top groups, and interviewed them. They selected Ralph Anderson and Associates, and were fortunate to have former city manager John Goss and former fire chief Jeff Bowman as the lead staff on this project. The consultants presented their October 9, 2007, report to the City Council on November 6, 2007, in which they outlined their comprehensive review that included eight findings, four service delivery options, three policy recommendations, and nine fire service enhancements. After receiving the written and oral presentations, the City Council voted to continue fire service provision through the Ventura County Fire Protection District, but directed staff to meet with Fire District staff to discuss the consultant's findings and suggested enhancements. Staff was also directed to return with an update to council in six months. This is the third of such updates since the presentation of the original review. At each update, the council has expressed their concern with the annual net subsidy to the district, which causes the City of Thousand Oaks to be considered a donor agency within the district. Of the nine enhancements, four and a half have been deemed improvements made by the district and city. Those that will continue to be discussed and negotiated include the increase of fire engine staffing from three-to-four-person companies. Some progress has been made with three companies becoming four-person companies, and the city will continue to negotiate for full implementation at applicable fire stations. Also, placement of paramedics on every engine and ladder truck. The district is still implementing their paramedic extension program, which is to be completed by May 2009. Three to four months after that full implementation, city and Fire District staff will meet to assess the program. In addition, the city continues to discuss the relocation of Station 35 to the Seventh Day Adventist site, which, when it is developed, and the replacement of Fire Station 33 from Lake Sherwood to a location in the Westlake Village area of Thousand Oaks. The half completion was to the identification of the engines and stations markings on each of them, but there are still ongoing discussions from that enhancement on the exclusive assignment of a fire chief to Thousand Oaks. As outlined in the staff report, council is asked to direct staff to continue negotiations with the district regarding the outstanding service enhancements. In addition, it's under consideration for the council to direct staff to prepare and submit a second formal request from the mayor to the district board chair requesting a public discussion on the location of a fire station in the Westlake area of Thousand Oaks. Staff will continue to discuss these items with Fire District staff and plan to return by September 2009 with update number four. This concludes my report, and I am available for questions, along with Fire District, Fire Chief Mike LaPlante, and Chief Kevin Nester, along with our consultants, Chief Jeff Bowman and John Goss of Ralph Anderson and Associates. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gillette.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What was the date of the consult, when was the consultant's report brought to the council?
On November 6, 2007.
November 2007?
Yes.
Okay, so we're essentially a year and a half into, we've had it for a year and a half.
That's correct.
If I recall at that time, one of the most significant things that was identified in the consultant's report, oh, let me back up for a minute. I want to make absolutely certain there's no misunderstanding that any comments I have or any sentiments expressed in any way question the quality of service that the residents of this city receive from the Ventura County Fire Protection District. The firefighters are absolute professionals and provide a tremendous service to us, and I don't want to lose sight of that during any of the discussion on this matter. That being said, at the time, a year and a half ago, that the consultants brought forward their report, the identification of between 5.8 and 6.2 million M, million dollars per year, that identification was made, that there was that much more going out of the city in taxes than was being returned in service. Now, in listening for the last year and a half, I don't, I have not heard any dispute of that number. And I recall at the time, there were a list of enhancements that you just referenced in your report. And I also recall at that time thinking that there is no way in the world, with all kinds of enhancements, adopting everything that was mentioned, that that 6 million dollars for rounded figure could be addressed. So I have to assume, with the attempts to get a discussion going, attempts to reach more resolution than there has been, and I don't mean to diminish the work that's been done, but quite frankly, 6 million this year, 6 million last year, 6 million the year before, 6 million next year, we said it at that time, pretty soon you're talking about real money. Who's paying for the fire stations in the Upper Ojai and those areas around Ventura County that don't have sufficient tax base? The taxpayers of the City of Thousand Oaks are paying for it, and I seriously question the equity in that. And one major act of good faith or goodwill from my standpoint would have been at least a recognition and movement towards the relocation of a full-service fire station, 33, from Lake Sherwood, to a location where it could adequately serve the residents of the Westlake portion of Thousand Oaks, and they wouldn't have to rely on Engine Company 37 coming clear from North Ranch. But I understand that's not going anywhere either. So what do we, what conclusions do we draw from this? That the residents of this community will continue, of this city, will continue to be burdened with this, with this extraction of this 6 million dollar tax fund? No discussion, no attempt at major adjustments to try and address some of the inequities? And the next time we look at it will be another six months from now, in September, well, that puts us two years into it. And I guess from a staff perspective, does anybody understand what we're waiting for? Or what, what kind of responses are we getting back from the governing board of the Fire Protection District, the county board of supervisors? That's the question. Thank you.
As you know, from the last update, six months ago, council directed us to write a letter, the mayor wrote a letter to the board of supervisors requesting a meeting to discuss that. And staff, we have received a response back to that, that they aren't willing to discuss it at this time. That's why the recommendation is for you to write a second, a second letter be written to request that there is a public discussion on it. And I'm not sure if Fire Department staff has any other comment on it.
Chief LaPlante, welcome. I'm not trying to put you on the spot, and you know, no one in the world has more respect for you as a professional and the service you provide, but there's something that's very, very wrong with this situation, and it doesn't seem to be getting right or even approaching any kind of, any kind of, kind of correction in the foreseeable future. And I don't want to put you on the spot. I recognize you're an executive manager and a professional in the field, and this thing stinks of politics, all the way up and down. There's got to be a reason. Fire professionals can look at this, do an evaluation of the service needs, recognize where the populations are, where the equipment is, make appropriate adjustments. That's on the adjustments. My personal feelings on the paramedic issue, I can, having been in public safety for many years, what I see is, is the growing of the bureaucracy by public paramedics replacing private paramedics. We've already been, that's already been decided, and it's happening. So the, the private paramedics, that the companies that paid for themselves are going to be phased out, and we're going to have public paramedics. All right, I recognize that. That's, that's reality, and that's, it's taken a long time to get us there. But this thing about that fire station at Lake Sherwood providing a boutique operation to a relatively small population when the need is in another area, and even someone like myself from a lay perspective can see it, if I'm missing something, I need to know that. And then the big question, we need to get some sort of an answer, and I know this is way above your pay grade, but this tax inequity stinks, and something's got to happen to it. I appreciate giving you an opportunity to comment, but I sure don't want to put you on the spot.
I completely understand. Just, first of all, I'd like to acknowledge, I do appreciate, and so do the people that work for me, that your comments about service and the quality of service, we really do appreciate that. Now, as far as some other things, I think you'd mentioned Station 37 coming into the Westlake. Actually, it's, as you recall, Station 31 on Duesenberg, that really comparatively is far closer than 37. So we really rely on a number of engine companies to respond to Westlake 33, as you mentioned, being one, 31 out of Duesenberg being the other engine company in that area, and 37 would be third in, basically. So we have multiple, and we also rely upon Los Angeles County Engine 144 by an MOU to respond to that, that area. And I think, first of all, that, that service area, the Westlake geographic area, as we call it, is really serviced by those three engines, and we're finding our response times are, are very, very good in that area. I think our consultants have noticed that as well. It's not really a service vacuum in Westlake Village by any means. Can service be better? It can be better anywhere in our jurisdiction, and we work consistently to do that. And so from a service perspective, I think we're on the mark across the board in the city, and I think we're doing very well in the Westlake area as far as basing our evaluation of service on response times primarily. We believe that fire services can be analyzed by using three criteria. One, when there's a call for service, how quickly can we respond to that call for service? We think we do that very well. Number two, once we arrive, how well do we do? And I think we've all heard comment before, your own community surveys have indicated service is very good once we arrive. So we've got good response times, we arrive and do good work. The third level, the third analysis service might be, well, what percentage of call volume does one particular area request compared to its amount of generated revenue? And so if we look at that personally, and I believe back on April 8th of last year, Fire Chief Roper did come here and say he does not agree with the 5 to 6 million dollar figure. Numbers are numbers, and they can be looked at 18 different ways, but we feel we have a more valid model of looking at service delivery, rather not where a fire station is located and trying to attach some dollar figure to that fire station, and from that divining some sort of service. Really, the service is how fast will we respond to that call for service? How will we do when we get there? And what's the balance about service delivery? And we think there's room for discussion on that very fact, that, that dollar amount that was presented in the consultant's report. We acknowledge the fact that in 1993, we used the same model to assess value service here. But over the time, especially in the last five years, certainly in my 25-year career, it's become imperative to me that that's not the best way to look at that. I really believe the other three criteria are much more valid. And I think you'll be, as I was, pleasantly surprised that there's, it doesn't come to that 5 to 6 million dollar range, and I think there's room for that. And we encourage the city to consider discussing that from a different perspective that we think is pretty accurate. So, and speaking for the district, we do dispute the 6 to, 5 to 6 million dollar figure. We do think we have great response times in a Westlake, not stating they couldn't be better, and we're consistently analyzing those. As we had spoke before, we now have an AVL-based dispatching system in which it doesn't matter whether the unit comes out of its station or down the road while it's doing fire safety inspections. We assess how quickly we can get to that call for service. In the past, yes, we looked at a fire station and assumed that's where it'll be coming out of, and we sort of tried to develop some response time from that, but we're finding that's just not the case anymore, and our response times are down from our last survey. In the past, our response times in a Westlake, on the average, were about 5 minutes and 13 seconds. Now, we're down to about 4 minutes and 59 seconds. And I believe that's directly attributable to the in which it doesn't matter whether the unit comes out of its station or down the road while it's doing fire safety inspections. We assess how quickly we can get to that call for service. In the past, yes, we looked at a fire station and assumed that's where it'll be coming out of, and we sort of tried to develop some response time from that. But we're finding that's just not the case anymore. And our response times are down from our last survey. In the past, our response times in a Westlake, on the average, were about 5 minutes and 13 seconds. Now we're down to about 4 minutes and 59 seconds. And I believe that's directly attributable to the AVL dispatching and some of the other things that we did. That's real data, that's not prediction. That's real data that we can get every day, looking at our folks move across the map, timing their route. So while I understand completely your concern about fairness in the fire district, all we're asking is that there may be some level of reconsideration, rediscussion with the consultants to take another look at that dollar figure and see if there's some validity in that other model that we're proposing to review service levels. Your comments about paramedics, as we've said before, our intention is not to replace private paramedic services. We're in a partnership with AMR. They are still the primary paramedic service delivery tool. And we are there for that second call. We're to assist them where we can, or provide primary paramedic service where we arrive first. But it was never our intention to replace in any way our private paramedic providers we partner with and have for a number of years. And it's been a great relationship with them. So I leave you with those comments, and I'm available for any other questions you might have.
Thank you, Chief LaPlante. I appreciate your response. I'm going to get away from the fire station issue for the time being because it's kind of a moot point for us to carry on in this forum, that discussion on that issue. I guess what I need to know, and I appreciate your comment, that we need to discuss the dollars. And I would ask Ms. Papastis, the letters that we have sent, if I understand correctly, we have asked the county, the Board of Supervisors, which is the control panel for the Fire Protection District, for a sit-down dialogue on this matter, have we not?
The letter requested that it would be placed on their agenda for discussion.
And how long ago was that?
In October of last year.
And what has the response to that been?
We've just recently got a letter that basically said they're not interested, that they weren't going to take it up at this time.
They're not interested, the county's not interested in it. Well, we're interested, and I have a sense that our taxpayers are interested. And I recognize Chief LaPlante's comment. The question is, are the numbers accurate? Are they close? And probably the only way that's going to be, that question's going to be answered, is a full-blown audit. And have we made a request of the county to audit, for a full-blown audit, to look at exact costs so that we know whether or not the numbers that we got in the consultant's report are valid and continuing?
No, we haven't recently made such a request.
Mr. Mitnick?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, for clarification on the numbers, and I'm looking right at the consultants. The data provided for that report was provided by fire district personnel. It's their figures. With respect to the validity of the data, the data is the data, they provided it. The consultants and your city staff felt that the actual subsidy is higher than the figures used in the report. The consultants erred on the side of caution and used a lower figure. It's a significant recurring of subsidy. So, but the purpose here, this is update number three, is not to rehash those numbers. And if a full-blown new forensic audit was done by an outside auditing firm, the numbers wouldn't be what they would be. But that's not the issue tonight, it's following up on the recommended enhancement. So I'd like to just clarify that.
Well, I can appreciate the importance, I have a real appreciation for the importance of the enhancements. But at the core of the enhancements is the inequity in the tax dollars. There's the linkage. And that being the linkage, there's something very wrong here. And we go to the people that we're supposed to be able to sit down and talk to when we recognize something that we'd like to discuss, that we think there's some unfair, something is unfair, or something's not equitable, and we don't seem to be able to get a response. Therefore, what do we do? How do we deal with this? Do we look for an objective third party and go to them and ask for them to intervene in this to help? Someone like the Ventura County Grand Jury? And ask the grand, send a letter to the Grand Jury explaining our case and say, "We have an obligation to tell our taxpayers, are they being significantly overcharged on an annual, ongoing basis? Or is our information in error? And should we accept what we're getting and be grateful for it?" You know, this city has quite a history in its relatively, or quite an experience, has had some real experience in its relatively short history. We found library services totally inadequate and found out that there was no way that we could get improved library services for a community that insisted and demanded not. We left the county library system. And we now have one of the finest library systems of any city our size or any community our size anywhere in the country. Something as basic as animal control. We did a thorough analysis and found out that we were paying an exorbitant rate for animal control and not getting any services, and the complaints kept going. And we left the county animal control program and contract with Los Angeles County. Had to go outside the county to get service that was acceptable. And now we find a situation, something as basic as fire protection. Yes, we receive excellent fire protection, but you talk about being gold-plated. If these numbers are anywhere near accurate, it's platinum-plated. And should the taxpayers of the City of Thousand Oaks be responsible for that much extra revenue going into a county agency to provide fire protection to other areas of Ventura County? Is that our responsibility? And I think not. So it would seem to me that we need to have some help with this. We don't seem to be able to do anything, to be able to move it on our own. We're a year and a half into it. Another report coming six months from now, that would be two years into it. And I don't see anything on the horizon that's going to improve this situation other than a national, international, national, state, and local economy that's getting more and more seriously in trouble. And yet we've got a huge seven-figure that we don't know for sure. We relied on our consultants, there's superb professionals in their field. We haven't heard any really strong arguments to oppose their findings. And yet we can't get the other party in this thing to sit down and talk with us. It just seems to me that perhaps we need to look out for, as I said, the objective third party to get involved and start giving us some help. Now, I'm not proposing that we do, that we address more draconian measures in this yet, but I think we need to start a process. And I think the first thing would be to validate to the extent we possibly can, and that's to go to the Grand Jury and ask for the Grand Jury to insist on and help us get a total and full forensic audit of what's going on in the tax increments going out of this city versus the service levels and costs coming back in. That's where we start. And if we need to agendize that, or whatever we need to do, that's what I would, at this point, call for. And I'd ask for my colleagues' comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Drew Gillette, Ms. Irwin.
I have some more questions for Chief LaPlante. I really do think, to me, the biggest issue is that we have been talking about moving this station for the last six years. And we did have the, what I would consider, independent third party. Do the, go through all the effort and look at the data, most of it coming from you. And nothing really happened with that toward moving the station. So you can imagine our extreme frustration that we want to move toward that. And apparently, the Board of Fire District's Board of Directors doesn't want to. So I have a couple of questions. The latest letter from the county CEO talked about the difference between, now you've moved to a dynamic model as opposed to a static model. It seems to me a couple of things. First of all, aren't the trucks in the station the majority of the time?
Right.
And so is there really a big, significant difference between the static model and the dynamic model?
Frankly, we are finding that there is a difference. One could argue the size, or scope, or impact of that. But what we're finding now is, in the days, and as I came through my career, we would base our response areas, assuming the engine was in the fire station, and it would be a single engine. For example, we would identify Station 31's response district, and that would be their district. And regardless of where they were, there was an assumption they were in their quarters or in that area. And when a call for service came in within that boundary, we would select that engine and respond, regardless of where another apparatus may be in relation to that. And if the engine companies were savvy, they would hear the call for 31 and say, "Well, I'm 34, I'm on the freeway, I'm closer to the call, we'll take it." But if they didn't hear that, they wouldn't take it. And Engine 31 would respond, and potentially in a longer period of time than 34's may have. That being the earlier model, right now, these engines drive around with their sectors that surround them. They're always being assessed on how their response area now relates to all the other apparatus in the area as it moves around the area, whether it's in quarters or moving around. It's that dynamic look. For example, if Engine 36, for example, was coming down from Oak Park en route to training at headquarters, and was going down the 101 freeway at Westlake, and a call for service came in at the intersection just south of that freeway's intersection. In the old days, we'd look for Station 31 or Station 33, hope, and they were close. Now, our AVL would pick up Engine 36 and bring that into that call immediately. No delays. They'd be sent the information on an MDC. They'd be picked up by advanced vehicle locating systems and brought into that call. So we're finding that's a more dynamic, more modern, more effective way of determining which closest resource to be sent. And so that's kind of how we're looking at that. Granted, so then we look at, that's our prediction. We predict that engines will get there sooner. Then we have to look at the actual numbers, and that's what we look at all the time. We now have a full year of data on this AVL impact. How are we doing on our response times? What are our average response times across the board? Those are the actual response times. Regardless of where that piece of apparatus generated from, how long did it take us to receive that call for service? Process it, dispatch the appropriate and nearest resource, to include not just fire apparatus, but paramedic services out of AMR, because we are partnered with them to dispatch? So we're now getting the closest piece of apparatus into that call with this new system versus the predicted or assumed closest by virtue of a fire station location. So it's more dynamic.
But the majority of hours, let's say after 6 o'clock, you still have the truck in the station.
True, and if they're coming from their quarters, that would impact that average response time. The average response time is just what it is. How long does it take to get them to a call for service? Regardless of their location from a starting point. And it does take into consideration that amount of time, which is significant that they're in quarters. But it also leverages and takes advantage of that time when they're out of quarters, or another apparatus like Engine 31 may be working on the east end of its sector and is then therefore closer to the call for service than 33 may have been in quarters. And so it does show up. That issue of coming out of quarters is accommodated when you look at average response time. How long is it taking for us to get to a call for service? Regardless of where it's starting from, whether it's in quarters or out of quarters. It's far more dynamic, far more accurate than just assuming that A, they'll always be in quarters, or B, Engine 31 is in its quarters, Engine 33 is in its quarters, and therefore, by our estimates, 33 would be closer, so let's just bang them out of their station. We can actually see where Engine 31 is, or Engine 36 on the freeway, or where the nearest AMR unit may be. And so it really is, I think, a great leap in technology. Other departments use it across Southern California. It really is the leading edge technology that we're going to, that helps us pick the best resource for the response. So again, you know, we've even gone away with station sectors. Where Station 33 no longer has a response sector, it has an administrative sector where it does fire safety inspections and things like that. But we really don't have a response district. They have that district. As the engine moves through our area, its district follows it around. And so it's close just by that regard. So that's what we think is the benefit. And we are seeing some, as we look at our data, some reductions in average response times because of it. And we can attribute that because apparatus hasn't changed, the area hasn't changed. We don't think traffic has changed. It's maybe how we're dispatching and getting units more appropriate on the road.
So, and how reliable is the GPS right now?
What we're finding, as with any new technology, the first few months was somewhat questionable. We had to go through different modems, different antennas. But right now, our reliant, our level of reliance is very, very high. In fact, you talk to our responders now, first couple of months they were skeptical. Now, if they lose that connection for some reason, or there's some delay, they're saying, "Where is it? We need it, it is excellent, we like it. It gives us mapping, it gives us nearest resource." I think the reliability is very high. It's been in service in other parts of the state for many, many, many years by fire departments we're all familiar with. The consultants are familiar with it. It's all very, very accurate and solid, a solid tool and a platform to work off of. Now, we're not, we're, I guess, skeptical to the degree that it does impact life risk in our response times. So we're continually assessing that and making it better. Just to make sure that we have the least amount of any wobbles in the system whatsoever. But I can tell you, I watch it all day long in my vehicle, and rarely, if ever, if ever, do I see it come up with a wrong answer. And when it does, we can recreate what the computer was considering at that very second, and we can assess where the mistake might have been made and correct that to the very second. So I think we're being very successful in moving forward into the future in this model of dispatching, so.
Okay, and then in her letter, she says, "No operational deficiency exists." And so is, what, how do you define an operational deficiency?
Well, you know, as we've looked at this, we certainly look originally at some benchmarks for response time. We look at average response times into areas. So we geographically look, for example, at the Westlake geographic area, and we take every call that we responded to. We look at those code calls. We know when a vehicle goes en route. We can track it as it moves along the road. We can assess its road speed while it moves. And we know exactly when that unit arrives on scene. So we take that number, those actual numbers, and we simply do a mathematical analysis of that to give us our average response times to a particular area. And we're looking at the benchmark of five minutes for EMS calls. We're looking at other benchmarks consistently about how are we doing? And that's sort of a standard benchmark for many, many areas. And so that's how we assess that. So we will look at the Westlake geographic area, and we provided some data back to the consultants that looked specifically at that area. We plotted the calls for service. We looked at our response time into there. And frankly, we are there under five minutes. So there isn't a vacuum of service from a response time perspective. And I think, I don't want to speak for the consultants, but in my last conversation with them, they agreed with that. There isn't a service vacuum in Westlake.
We, there was a very similar situation in SEMI, and they are able to move their station. Was there an operational deficiency there?
I think what you're looking at in SEMI is, and similar to 33, is that as populations move, as we see our call volume move, as opportunities present themselves, we're always looking at more properly positioning a fire station as it's, in its, in an area that the population seems to be growing. 43, for example, I believe that you're talking about, we were successful in talking with the community, talking with political leaders, and saying, "We would like to, now that we have to do something with the old Station 43 built in the 60s, we have an opportunity here to reposition a new station." Well, they were cooperative. Now, I'll tell you that moving a fire station, if it was all numbers-based, we could do it without any consideration. But we know it's a neighborhood fire station, we know it affects people's lives. So it takes a while. It has to be carefully analyzed and properly done. And it took us quite a bit of time for that Station 43 move to be accommodated. But how that happened, it was through cooperation by, and some understanding of the residents of the Knowles area. And our Board of Directors, in that particular case, approved that move.
So if you're considering reconstruction, then you do think that that fire station would be at the proper location at Petrero and Westlake?
Well, if all things being equal, and it were time to reconstruct that fire station, we would look at all opportunities, and the city had indicated that that property would be available. We're looking at it from an operational perspective. It takes call volume for that fire station from 200 calls a year to over 600 calls a year. That's more efficient, it's more effective. But then we also have to remember, there's a lot of people in the Sherwood area who, while we're serving Westlake within our benchmarks, we leave behind some residents. And then we have to take a real close look at that. What's the impact, while there's no service vacuum in Westlake, what's the impacts of moving that fire station to other service areas, or other constituents? Because remember, we all share constituents here. The city has its constituents in the city, but the district also shares those constituents. The folks in Westlake are our constituents as well, and we're obligated to serve them properly. But at the same time, we share the risk, we share the responses, and we don't want to leave anyone behind when we move something like this. We want to carefully consider it. So if Fire Station 33 in its current configuration at some point becomes absolutely untenable, then we would have to look for another location. And that brings that Petrero-Westlake site back into the conversation. But that is a Board of Directors' policy decision.
So if the Board, because to me, it's really obvious that that station, that Sherwood truck has to go by that corner of Westlake and Petrero and where the much, much, much larger population center is. So you're adding two or three minutes to the response time every time you go by. So it just seems to me, with what the consultants are saying, it's very obvious to us. But what you are kind of alluding to is that we need to get citizens to tell the Board of Directors- of Directors that they're interested in it, because, you know, we can sit there and write a second letter, and we can request that the item be agendized, and we can request a, an audit, and unless we pay for it, you know, who knows if the Board of Directors is going to do something about it? But we're really frustrated here.
I can't speak for the Board of Directors, but I can tell you that where Station 33 is currently located, it serves the Westlake population, as does Engine Company 31, and we have no indication that it's any less served than anywhere else. And so, when we move something, well, then who comes up short end of the deal? And so, we don't want to leave behind other residents to move a fire station without very careful consideration. And so, that's our challenge, and it just is what it is. Now, Fire Station 33 was built when the population center wasn't like Sherwood, but...
Okay, well, and I would say our, I think our request is then, don't move it and just build another station at the...
Well, that leaves me with building a fire station for 400 calls a year, and that would be, that'd be difficult, so.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Fox?
Thanks. Chief, just to kind of carry on a couple of things that you mentioned. Does the district have a, essentially, a capital improvement plan?
Yes, we do. As for anything budgeted over a certain amount of dollars, we have a capital improvement budget and for apparatus and other capital improvement projects.
Are fire stations included in that?
Typically, they are, yes.
Okay. And I would imagine that the capital improvement plan, that's a, kind of a long-range document, and it, it kind of coincides with kind of a strategic plan, doesn't it?
Well, I'm going to kind of defer these level of questions to our Deputy Fire Chief, Kevin Nestor, who is the master of the budget, so I'll let him answer those accurately.
Good evening, Chief Nestor, how are you?
Good evening. How are you doing?
Chief, I was just, I was just curious, I'm sure the district has a strategic plan for their capital facilities in terms of, I think Chief LaPlante talked about age of stations and when stations would need to be refurbished or rebuilt, that type of thing. Does the district have that plan?
Yes, you're correct. We do have a capital improvement plan for our facilities.
Okay. And the fire stations are included in that as part of the kind of a strategic?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. I'm assuming Fire Station, is it 44 or 43 that's in SEMI?
It's Station 43, the one in the Knowles.
That got moved?
It's earmarked to be moved. It hasn't been moved yet, yes. We have property for that, and we're going through the planning process right now.
That's 43?
That's Station 43, correct.
Okay. Is Station 43, are they kind of sitting on some map somewhere, some strategic capital plan that, that station, when it needed to be rebuilt and the locate, land was located, that station would be moved?
Yes.
Okay. And what was that based on?
It was based on two factors. One, it was an old fire station, it was time to be replaced, and two, we took a look at, would it be better suited to be somewhere else than its present location?
I got it.
And our statistics showed us, our data showed us, that it was, it'd be better to be moved to a piece of property that was available.
Okay. How old's Station 43?
I don't know. I think it was built in the 50's.
Okay.
So, it's over 50 years old.
50 years old, okay. Is, are there any other stations that are part of your strategic plan that, long-term, you're looking at moving?
We have a couple of fire stations. We have one in the Upper Ojai.
In Thousand Oaks, by the way?
Oh, excuse me, no, not in, not in the City of Thousand Oaks moving, except for Station 35. It's located on Hillcrest and Lawrence, and there's a possibility that property may become available at the Seven Day Adventist development, so.
So, Fire Station 35?
That's correct.
And that's to replace the present Fire Station 35, which is on Hillcrest, right?
That's correct.
How old's that station?
That station was also built, I believe, in the 60's. It's not quite as old as the Station 43. It's been remodeled a couple of times, added on to a couple of times, and primarily, the reason for moving that fire station is just because of apparatus has gotten larger, and we have a desire, as the consultants have identified, to stand up another support company or ladder truck or a rescue engine here in the City of Thousand Oaks, and to do that, we see an opportunity to build a larger fire station, which that property where 35 exists right now would not accommodate a ladder truck, so.
So, you're looking at putting a truck company in, the new 35's?
Yeah. We're going to move a truck company and then stand up another rescue engine or a Quint on the east end of the city. Station 31 is, right now, is the plan.
I don't know, but it looks kind of old. How old's the current Fire Station 33? When was that built?
That's another station that was built, probably in the early 50's also.
Okay.
It's been around a long time. That's one of those.
Is 33 older than 43? Forty, yeah, 43?
They're probably about the same era. Back in the era when we used to have firefighters that lived, actually lived in the houses, both of those stations were that way.
Okay. So, as far as criteria of age and kind of upgrading, 33 certainly fits the bill from the district standpoint of it...
Yeah, we've identified in our strategic plan that it's time for that station to be rebuilt. We've recently done a little bit of remodeling, but that's just to make it, continue to make it habitable.
Okay. So, if it was built in the 50's, many of the homes that are currently there were not there, is that?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, and then, even more so, both major developments on Thousand Oaks Boulevard and Westlake, the lakes and whatever we're calling it, the Applebee's and all this, none of those were existing. Those were vacant lots, weren't they?
That's probably correct, yeah.
Okay.
Our assumption.
So, does density come into play at all as far as citing the stations? When you guys are looking at your plan, as, as things develop and growth occurs, do you look at kind of the changing demographic in terms of that, in terms of citing your stations?
That's obviously a consideration. We spend a lot of time on, on response time and our capability to get to calls for service. Obviously, density has an impact on calls for service, so it is a consideration, sure.
And the current location of 33, that primarily, that, that's more proximate to residential, i.e. Sherwood, than it is the, any other commercial or any of the other?
Yes, yes, that's correct.
Now, the property that we're looking at, it's on the corner of Petro when Lesik Boulevard, right across from, from Westlake Elementary School.
Right.
And I think my, in my discussions with Chief Roper, and we even maybe discussed with Chief LaPlante as well, is that, that's a piece of property that would, in terms of size of the district, that would provide for sufficient size of a, of a station sufficient to fit new apparatus and maybe even a support company and that type of thing is...
That's my understanding also. If you look in that area, obviously, it's pretty well-built out, except for right in that general area.
Okay. But as far as back to your strategic plan, did I hear you write that only 35's and 43's, like if you were to give me a copy of that plan, those are the only stations that are contained in that, that 33's somewhere down the road, is it slated by the district to be moved?
Just to clarify, you asked, were there any stations on our plan, and then you further clarified in the Thousand Oaks area?
Right.
Well, we have other stations that are earmarked. We have a station in the Upper Ojai that has methane gas leaking into it, and so, we're choosing to relocate that fire station. We find it to be necessary. There's a number of other stations that are earmarked in the plan because of age, primarily because of age, and we're looking for other opportunities to move them. We're rebuilding some fire stations on their sites also. That's another strategy. In fact, 33's is, we've looked at that strategy also of rebuilding that station on that site, so.
You've actually looked at rebuilding 33's in its present location?
Well, obviously, we have a site, and so, we're, we know that we're going to have to do something with that fire station, so it's either relocate it if the opportunity presents itself, or built it, rebuild it on its site, because, you know, someday, that fire station's going to have to be rebuilt.
Right. No question.
Yeah.
It's pretty old. In fact, if I heard you right, it's one of the oldest stations in the district, isn't it?
It's, it's, it's pretty close. Yeah.
It's definitely in the top five.
Definitely, yeah. No doubt, no doubt.
David Letterman's top 10 reasons to move 33's? Okay. The Chief LaPlante talked about the response times, and I just want to note for the record, unless the district has different numbers, that while it's within the five minutes, it's within five minutes by one second. That's what I read in the report, that it is within the standard, but it's four minutes 59 seconds.
Yes.
Okay. So, that's not in dispute?
No.
Okay. What I'm curious about is that Chief LaPlante talked about, if the station was moved, it would go from 200 calls to 600.
According to the consultant's records in the report, it basically, what would happen is because it would take a portion of the area that 31 responds to now, because it'd be moving a little bit further northeast.
Right.
So, that's what would happen. It would, actually, we would see it as being more efficient, because we would have two fire stations sharing the number of calls that happen in that geographical area.
I would think that's a good thing, right?
Absolutely, no doubt.
Yeah, okay. So, we're, everybody's on the same page there?
Absolutely. We totally 100% agree with that.
Okay. I'm just curious, how many calls for service to 31? That's at Duesenberg, right? How many calls?
I think it's 1,300, I believe. Yeah, 1,300 or 1,400 a year.
That's pretty busy for out here.
Yeah, it's a fair, fairly busy house, not one of our busiest stations, but it's a fairly busy house, yes.
The one on Arbelis is the busiest?
The one in SEMI Valley on LA Avenue is actually the, or on Church Street on Station 41.
I mean, for Thousand Oaks?
In Thousand Oaks, yeah.
Okay.
34 is on Arbelis is the busiest.
Okay. So, the, the, the incident sharing or call sharing, if the station was relocated, the district would recognize that as a good thing, because it would be a sharing of your high propensity calls.
Sure.
31's runs 1,300 or 1,400 a year. Even if 33's were to move, it's only running at, what, 600s? It's not even doing half of what 31's is doing? Is that right?
Yeah, it's even less than that. I believe it's around the 400 number that Station 33 responds on calls. I don't have those right in front of me, but...
And it's currently running 200?
Actually, in looking at our most recent run data, we had early with the older model, we had it going about 230 times a year. Our last model shows it running about 300 to 350 calls a year. Just by the new model, it'd be more accurate on the response time. So, just by the new technology, we've sort of made it a little better, but obviously, there would still be a spike in calls, or to move it, it would share calls with Station 31, absolutely.
Right. It seems, and I don't know either, either of you gentlemen, that even at 300 calls, that seems like an underutilized resource. I recognize it's built, neither of you were around when it was built, but compared to 1,300 or 600, or, I don't even know what Arbelis is, isn't, isn't, and I don't know this to be a fact, you guys would, isn't 33's your, your slowest station in the city?
No, it actually wouldn't be, and I think our challenge as being a district, there are areas that, that are, not only through urban sprawl, but by just the growth of the community, have caused us to, to provide good service to some degree. We've moved fire stations to those outlying areas, Malibu, for example.
Right.
The Rincon out on Highway 101, where there's heavy oil field and some residential. So, as a district, we have an obligation to serve those folks, although it's at a much less density. Our rural response times are different than our suburban area response times. There is some recognition of that, and so, some of those lotline fire stations, Upper Ojai, for example, we have an obligation to serve those people. Under our agreement with CAL FIRE, CDF, we're a contract county, so we are allowed to use some of their funds, not a lot, but some of their funds to support some of those fire stations in the summertime, because we protect the state responsibility area out there. But by and large, those stations are there for the populations as, as spread out as they were, and for a number of years, we were catching ourselves having to speed up and catch up with urban sprawl, for example.
Okay.
And that's what happens.
Let me get back to the, I just want to clarify, maybe with Chief Nestor. Chief, 33's is or is not on your strategic plan to be relocated?
Yeah, it is.
As assists today?
Yeah, absolutely.
It is?
Yeah, it's on the plan to do something.
Based on density and all the things we talked about?
Yeah.
Okay.
And the age of the fire station.
Right, and the age of the fire station.
Yeah.
Okay. So, it's the district's perspective, as professional fire district managers, that at some point in time, 33 should be relocated, because the age of the station, closer to proximity of density, and the call load sharing with, with Station 31, among the big three?
It's our position that the fire station needs to be replaced, and like I had indicated before, when we do that, we ask ourselves, is it better suited somewhere else, and what is our, what kind of service is it delivering at this time?
Right.
So, you represent that...
And the location, Chief, I don't mean to, yeah, the location at Westlake and Petro, at least from, from one person's perspective, seems to be a, if that was available, that would be a very viable location for you guys, would it not?
Sure.
Okay. Chief LaPlante talked a little bit about the dispute of the dollars, and not to delve too much into it, but I do want to explore that a little bit. I'm just curious, we've been at this for quite some time, and we got the report, but we were, I think it was three years ago, Mr. Minnick, we actually started this exercise?
Oh, at least, but in earnest, about two years ago with the RFP process and all that.
Okay. I'm just curious, I'm pretty sure the district didn't just give this over to the consultants and didn't do any, any thought or calculation on their own. If the 5.6 to 6.2 is, is the district thinks is not an accurate number, what is an accurate number?
I don't have that in front of me, but I believe, talking with Chief Roper, if I have the dates correct, on April 22nd, he stood before you and advised you that you didn't agree with the numbers, and on April 2030, followed it up with that in writing. The consultants did come to us and asked specific questions, which we provided specific information, but we didn't manipulate those numbers in any way, shape, or form. That was the consultant who you hired to do that, and so, and so, that's why we, we don't agree with the numbers. They're not our numbers, and so, but we provided information specific to the questions they asked.
Yeah, Chief, my question is more, not so much the consultant, but I would be, I would be astonished candidly that the district hadn't done at least some analysis on their own, using your numbers, your accountants, your, your admin folks, to see if you could arrive at a number that at least the district felt comfortable with, setting aside that. And I was just curious, if their number isn't accurate, what, do you have a number?
I'd offer you this, that the data we, absolutely, we provided the consultants with data they requested. They analyzed their data using a model that, that they chose to use, and I have to admit, in 1993, we used the same model.
Okay.
And they used that model plus some other analysis processes they used, and end up with a 5.6 to 6.2 million dollar figure. But again, that is primarily based, and I think this where, where the, the opportunity for some discussion may be, is that the numbers really comes down to a, a analysis tool, a logic that's used for those numbers back in 2005, back in 1993, where a fire station was located, and what was parked in that fire station at that point was believed to be an indication of some sort of service value. Frankly, in the years that have gone by, we think there's, there's a more accurate way to assess that.
Okay, maybe...
And so, it's a matter of looking at the very same data, only we suspect that there's And so, it's a matter of looking at the very same data, only we suspect that there is a more applicable way to look at that, and that allow, and we've done that. And we feel that there is a disparity between those numbers, just how you look at them. And I think it would give the council and the citizens just a better feel. I'm not going to say that there is not a differential, that it would not be a resulting differential. But I think the, the, the scale of it would be different, I think it would be something that we could talk to with a little more confidence about either overcoming or equaling. That's just our perspective, my own work on the numbers and looking at, at what seems to be a more, at this day and age, more applicable way of looking at it. So, I'm not going to dispute the consultants' numbers because they use our numbers and the methodology. We're just simply saying that, as we look at it over the last year or so, when we look at this, this sort of way we're responding now with, with dynamic positioning, the location of a fire station begins to dim in its ability to indicate service value. And what's the, the cost, if you're going to buy a fire station, absolutely, what is Station Thirty-three's value? Hardware, software, people. But really, the value to your citizens is the service we deliver, how soon we get to a call for service, how good we do when we get there, then how many of those calls for service this geographic area accounts for, based on the rest of the district and the income we get from that geographic area. It begins to, I, I think, in my mind at least, allow some, for some discussion. Again, I'm going to reiterate, it doesn't mean that the differential is not there, but I think it would be a more comforting number, but I just leave that for you to consider.
Yeah, my question is, do you have a number? We've been at this for some time.
On my yellow, my yellow, on my yellow pad, I'm thinking in the terms of a million dollars to a million one point four, so, and this is not an accountant speaking.
Yeah.
But you're just using a different model of firefighter here.
Right.
You know, but I've, I've, believe me, I've lived this for three years, and I look at that five to six million dollar number, and I just-
Well, I guess my question, not so much that, and, you know, you're, with all due respect to our profession, you're, you're not a tailbone firefighter, you're, you're our fire chief and a, and an executive. My question is, has the, has the district, it's a straight, fair question, has the district run the numbers within their own admin staff? And do you have a number that you think is more accurate? It's, it's a simple proposition.
Yeah, I think we should-
Because it seems to me, if I could just finish.
We could certainly provide that, so.
If you're going to dispute the consultants' numbers, and, and that happens, I get that part. It would seem to me that, given the district's interest in providing us the, not just the best service, but the best service for the dollar, that there would be some analysis from the district on, we don't believe that's the accurate number, we get how they got there. This isn't, this isn't throwing rocks at, at the consultants.
No, not at all.
But, do you guys have a number?
Oh, two things, one, when we first started this process, I personally made it clear that we didn't feel it was in the best interest of anyone to get wrapped around the axle on that number. We really wanted to cooperate with the city and look at ways of improving service where we could, anywhere we could, and we've worked through that for a number of years now. You know, that, that number you're talking about, what we feel is a, a accurate depiction of the Thousand Oaks geographic area and its revenue generation versus percentage of calls that it asks for. Some thumbnail numbers, I'll give you this, you account for about twenty-seven point five percent of our, our call base. And we would work through and determine, well, what's to the today, I don't have today's numbers, but what's the revenue that come out of that same geographic area as percentage of our budget? And that would be the methodology, and, you know, it'd really be calls for service, and what percentage do you account for is, and not you, I'm saying not you, but those citizens that we share in that geographic boundary. Now, that could probably be disputed by somebody else as being a valid way of looking at things, but I, again, have looked at this for many years, and I, I come back to the fact that those three criteria, how fast we get to a call for service, how do we get there, how good we do when we get there, and what percentage of our call volume do we give to a certain geographic area, would be a very good way to look at the service delivery value that we provide to that geographic area.
Okay, well, let me, let me, let me kind of see if we can approach this a different way. Well, first, let me go back to, does the district dispute the methodology that the consultants used? And I think Chief LaPlante was very straightforward in saying, hey, they use the same methodology we used in ninety-three.
We'd use in nineteen ninety-three.
In two thousand and seven, do you, do you guys dispute their methodology? Is there a different standard in, in, by the way, in acceptable practices world of, of analysis and evaluation? Is, is there an issue with their methodology that you would question that would not be used from other, by other jurisdictions?
First of all, I, I'm not familiar with any, a single one standard for value of a fire service to a delivery area. There's probably for every fire department consultant and accountant, there's probably different ways subtly to do it, and there's probably a wide range. So, there isn't one we can lean our hand on. But to dispute their methodology, like you said, we, in nineteen ninety-three, looked at it as that way too, and, and looked at it, and as you know, the numbers were in the consultant's report, and then the consultant began to continue to look at other things, and the number went from frankly about three hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars to six point two. Our numbers, our methodology from nineteen ninety-three, using the same methodology that nineteen ninety-three indicated at eight hundred thousand dollar disparity, the last time we did it, using the same methodology and the same numbers, equal to three hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollar disparity. We had reduced that in two thousand and five dollars significantly. I was very pleased about that. But you hired a consultant who looked at other things, had a different perspective on things, and took that three hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars, and looked at other revenue sources and expenditures, and took a look at things they felt would not be applicable to the city to pay for, for example, the Bell Canyon contract, and tacked that onto some figure, and, and I can perfectly well see the methodology and how that could be linked, based on the fact that it depends on where a fire station is located, that's where you get your value. And that's the issue that we may have question of. We don't believe anymore that it's where a fire station sit, sits, would that be an accurate way of determining specific value to a service delivery area? We move beyond that, so, and that's, I think, where, where the differences come in. We're not disputing the numbers.
You mentioned that twenty-seven point five percent of the total calls of the district come from Thousand Oaks?
Correct.
What's Simi Valley, I'm just curious?
I don't have those numbers. Someone less than that, I would put it maybe tw- I'm really-
Aren't you the fire chief for Simi Valley too?
I am. I don't have it with me, around twenty-four percent, maybe, John did? About twenty-two point, twenty-two and some change, that sounds about right.
What's that, Chief?
Twenty-two and some change. Couple of quarters.
Twenty-two and a half, let's go. Twenty-two and a half. And Simi has the same number of fire stations as we have, six, less, I don't know?
Uh, yeah, I think-
I count six stations in Thousand Oaks.
Roughly, yeah, I think they would, you have, talking forty-three, yeah. I mean, are you, the, the other point here is, we, we recognize forty-three as serving Simi Valley, although it's not in the cities. At this point, it's not in that geographic geopolitical boundary, we would still consider as, you know, assessing that Simi Valley area. To say, how many stations does Simi Valley have, well, if we counted the stations within the city limits, it's different than what really serves Simi Valley.
Kind of like us.
Like you split forty-four's.
Right.
You know, it gets north into Thousand Oaks and the, the west into Simi Valley.
Actually, Simi Valley has five stations, and they share that one with you, forty-four, so they have less stations, actually.
Okay. And if you were to use the, the model that the consultants used, would you guys determine that, that, that Simi Valley's, because you're using the GPS district wide, right? That Simi Valley's service levels are askew compared to what the ninety-three model would be if we did the same analysis in, in ninety-three on Simi Valley using that model, that that would be skewed also?
Yeah, I don't know. I, we didn't do that, so I couldn't give you a, a very specific answer on that.
I, I, again, as a, as a, just looking at it, and I'll, I'll be candid, I haven't studied it very, very closely, I'm relying on you guys as the professionals, is that I was in the impression that Simi and Thousand Oaks had comparable fire protection. Comparable fire protection.
Well, they have comparable fire protection in the sense that we deliver it from a, a district approach.
Well, same number of stations, same number of apparatus.
No, they, it's a little different.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a little different.
Thousand Oaks has more?
Thousand Oaks does definitely have more, yes.
Okay. And, and where I'm headed to is that, you know, how much more, and how much more of the, as a, as a percentage of the total district budget do we pay into? Because I, I think everybody gets, you're a district, this isn't not going to be, you know, pound for pound, we get that part. Where we're trying to find is some level of, of balance between whether it's a million, two million, six million. Incidentally, for the record, the consultants say that their figures are conservative, that, that it's six point two, could even be higher. So, I'm, I'm a little concerned, Chief, that we could be off six, seven million dollars a year, simply because of how we look at a model. That's, that's a hard one. I could see a million, maybe two, but-
I think it's, it comes down to, I think it comes down to the, what we feel the accuracy of the model to be used.
Sure.
You know, what truly represents service to a geographic area.
I understand, and again, you're not, you know, Chief Bowman's a recognized expert in the field, Mr. Goss, recognized experts. This isn't throwing rocks at anybody, but I mean, we, we didn't bring in somebody from the outside that doesn't understand.
And, and we, we shared with them, as we did, the, the old data that showed them the, the, the process we used in nineteen ninety-three, which they validated and used again. So, we're not at all criticizing that, we're simply saying, we'd like to offer their, even to them, a different perspective, let the city consider that if possible. Not stopping the debate that we're having here about service levels and enhancements, you know, but, but I know you're, as I would, you know, lose sleep over that, that other number we've been talking about, the five to six. And it's, and it's an absolute legitimate question you have.
Okay.
And I just want to provide you that there, I think there's a comforting, at least I'm getting a feeling of comfort when I look at it from what I think is a more valid model now, and, and I think you'd probably feel better about it too, but that would be for you to consider.
Is there a middle, you said you guys don't have districts anymore, which I, I don't understand that, but-
Well, we have administrative sectors in which this engine company is responsible for fire safety inspections.
But you don't have first in districts anymore?
That's correct.
Okay.
Because they carry it around with them as they drive.
So, is there a center of thirty-three's district?
A center of administrative district, we could pinpoint that fire station and go out and say, well, where are travel times along these roads, where would we meet Engine Thirty-three on travel times? And we provided that to the consultants, a predictive map of, by road speeds.
More specifically, more specifically, if you were to locate the station at Petrero and Westlake, how much quicker to the center of the district, which I'm, I'm assuming existed a year ago?
Well-
How much quicker would there, because would that five minute response be now to the center of the district, something like two?
Let's, the center of the district, let's talk about the Westlake geographic area.
Right.
Because if you move the station, it's, the center of its universe moves with it, you know, and so we lose something on the other end towards Station Thirty-two and Petrero. But we're talking about into the Westlake geographic area, it was probably a, a two minute drive time savings, two minutes. I've driven it multiple times.
Me too.
I've validated, you know, our CAD generated road speeds, and, and don't lie, and it's two minutes to the intersection.
And the other thing, I don't recall the report, and I can go, I can go through it, but as far as the district's concerned, the closure of Westlake Hospital emergency room, and the requirement now, not just to get to the patient, but package him up, get him stabilized or not, and then transport him to Los Robles, or I guess even West Hills, would be the second. Any consideration in terms of golden hour and getting him to a, an ER doc, and, and those extra minutes that were required? Because now we're driving him across town, when thirty-three's was first built, and the development wasn't really there, Westlake was a functioning emergency room, they even had air ambulance calls there.
Took advantage of that, of course, I have to reiterate, and I think Councilmember Gillette would recall that, you know, we don't do transport. That is really an agreement that the ambulance company has with the MSA, the Emergency Management. So, when we arrive, we do our best to, with our paramedics, to, to stabilize the victim, even maintain care until a transport capability comes in. And yep, we're either going to Los Robles, as will see LA County in Los Robles, or West Hills, they diffuse patients, beds are always waiting, that kind of thing.
Chief, I guess what my, my question would be is that, has there been an analysis, because of the, we're responding maybe a couple of extra minutes longer, two, three, maybe even to the, I don't know what the boundaries are, it could be maybe up to four minutes. But now, instead of transporting maybe two minutes to three minutes to Westlake Hospital, we're going across town, which in traffic, you know, it could be a ten minute transport. You know, and is, is there any analysis of that? Because I think that's a legitimate issue.
Absolutely, and I believe you'd have to look at the EMSA data for that to see, will they grind into transport times? Where we look at getting someone to patient side as fast as we can, and understanding Engine Thirty-one, Thirty-three overlap quite a bit in that Westlake area, but we just want to get there to begin giving definitive treatment, and, and the, and the, the, the transport time is what it is. There's service areas for the ambulance companies, they have criteria they have to meet. And when we are at a, you know, at a patient's side, while we're waiting for an ambulance, sometimes that occurs, there's move ups all the time.
Let me just ask Chief Nestor his last question, because this is, I think he's going to want to answer it anyway. Chief, from a fire district perspective, in terms of your overall strategic planning and your capital plans and, and looking at things, is it, what is the district's recommendation for the location of thirty-three's?
Right now, from the district's perspective?
Absolutely. I'm not talking about any of the other nonsense, just as a professional fire manager.
The delivery of service from its present, present location is, is adequate and meets the stand, our standards.
Okay, if, if you had your druthers and the station, due to age and all those other things, and available location, would you move the station? I understand it's adequate, or you guys would be up there seeing something different, but would it be better located in another area, would it, in terms of meeting the district's overall needs?
I could say that about many of our fire stations, I could say that about Station Thirty-three, I could state, say, state that exact same thing about many of our fire stations. But the reality is, it's in a location that's providing adequate service to the Westlake area, so.
I understand, the, the question I'm asking is the, about Thousand Oaks, not other areas of the county.
Right.
From a professional fire manager perspective, when the time comes to rebuild or do something in terms of the, the age of the asset, which I think what we determine now is, is thirty-three's is, it is maybe one of your oldest fire stations. And it's clearly located in kind of the outskirts relative to density, and by relocating it to Petrero and Westlake, you actually enhance thirty-one's call, call load. Those seem like pretty compelling reasons that if, from a fire manager's perspective, relocating that station makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, and in many cases, it does create some efficiencies, but the district basically, basically represents that it's providing adequate service from where it's at right now.
Okay. Fair enough, fair enough, okay, thanks.
Ms. Bill Diddelapini?
Good evening, I do have a question for either one of you, depending on who would be able to answer it. Regarding the funding, how is the fire district funded?
About seventy-seven to seventy-eight percent of our budget is property taxes. And then the various, the resulting twenty-five percent is made up of service fees, permit fees, contracts, CAL FIRE contract for protecting a state responsibility area. So, by a hard dollar figure, as far as cash, there would be property taxes, secured and unsecured, redevelopment agency pass through, creates about seventy to eight, seventy-eight percent of that budget, and then there's the, the other contracts, et cetera.
And who put together the formula upon which the property tax amount is based?
I'll have to go back when the city was incorporated, each incorporated city sets its own tax rates for that particular area, as I understand it, again, from my limited perspective. But it's, it's established upon incorporation and, and other things, so.
Okay, perhaps, and one of, Mr. Adams would be able to answer it. The property taxes that go to help fund the fire district is based upon which formula, formula and mandated by, by whom?
This, this dates back to Prop thirteen, in which property taxes were frozen at one percent. AB eight, which was Assembly Bill eight at that point, determined what sort of the calculation would be. At that point, the county fire district was getting approximately fifteen percent of the property tax dollars generated from the incorporated area of Thousand Oaks. And that's, I believe, approximately their current percentage of property taxes. Hopefully, I clarified that.
You did. If we wanted to obtain complete equity, then how would we have to amend that formula?
We, currently, we, we have no ability to amend the formula. I think if we were talking about breaking away from the dis- district, we would have to go through the LAFCO process and negotiate, hopefully with the fire district and the county for that. Going through the LAFCO process would not guarantee us a hundred percent that we receive that fifteen percent for the taxpayers that pay for Thousand Oaks.
Okay, and Chief LaPlante, would you say that the property tax revenue from Thousand Oaks are higher compared to other areas because of demographics?
Well, it's assessed value, I mean, if we take a, out of our district, if we were to carve a piece out of that, whether it be a small area like North Ranch or an entire city like Thousand Oaks, you know, that assessed value, I mean, those particular areas changes, but for Thousand Oaks particular areas, certainly its assessed value is very high, and it produces a, a high percentage of property taxes for the district, yes.
So, the district isn't really charging the taxpayer or overcharging the taxpayer because the money that flows into the district is really based upon formula under Proposition thirteen?
Well, the, the formula used to, to determine tax dollars from a particular parcel in Thousand Oaks is the same one that is used anywhere in the district.
Correct, okay. The, I think we have established here that there aren't any service issues really with the fire district, that everything is, is adequate or better than adequate, but that services can always be improved, as they can always be improved elsewhere in the county, correct?
That's a balancing, improve one area, making sure you're not leaving behind in another area, I mean, that's, that's what we do. When fires don't recognize sea boundaries, they EMS calls, you know, we really look at it as assistance delivery.
Now, if a station were to be moved, if, if the Lake Sherwood station were to be moved to, to say, closer to Petrero and Westlake, would that, how much time, if any, would it add to your response times to the Lake Sherwood area and beyond?
I think it's a requisite, two minutes further down the road toward Westlake, it then debits a responses back into Petrero and the Lake Sherwood area by that same amount, two minutes.
You mentioned that perhaps it would, it would be helpful to have a discussion regarding the methodology used, and to perhaps discuss further as to how you arrive at different numbers. Because I think in order to make any progress here with negotiations, we have to agree on, on probably a number and, and actually agree on the methodology used.
I think it would, what it would do is just allow the, I think, continuation of a discussion from a common ground. Although we've had great success to this point in dealing with the recommendations, except for a few, which are still illuminated in the report. But that would, that would be the benefit, to be able to look at it, give everyone, I think, a, a better feeling for, for what we feel is happening. At least consider it, and, and that would allow you to consider those methodologies in which you feel are comfortable with, and, but it would allow that to, hopefully, eventually work from, from common platform. You know, but I think it wouldn't stop us from continuing to look at ways to improve service. The idea, for example, of albeit a service enhancement that isn't directly a service delivery item, but the application of the, the signage on an engine that says, this vehicle is serving the citizens of Thousand Oaks. That was your request, that was a valuable request, we accommodated that, but now that's being done throughout the district. All of our district members enjoy that change. So, the same thing can probably be said a lot of these other changes, as we move toward the, the paramedic extension program and, and those things that have genesis here really affect the rest of the district, and that's positive, and we, we, we'd be more than happy to talk at any time with anyone about service improvements and enhancements. And that's, I think, the only discussion we would have about methodology- And that's, I think, the only discussion we would have about methodologies, is just maybe looking at coming from common ground, or at least have a better understanding of each other's positions. But it wouldn't stop our cooperative.
A million dollars and $6 million is quite the range.
And that's why I was concerned about.
So there has to be some common ground regarding that. And I do have a question for your colleague, Chief Nestor. Are you anticipating any decline in revenues due to newly assessed properties in all of Antigua County?
I think just like all of us in government, we're making our best estimates right now on what the impacts of the economy is going to have on us. We believe that we will be impacted. We are looking at it, just like you all are looking at it, at this moment. We're not making any recommendations for any service changes, but we anticipate as the economy continues to, you know, degrade, that there's going to be an impact, so. I think that answers your question.
Yes. Do you have any idea, percentage-wise, how much, how severe the impact may be?
We really don't. We're going to be faced with a fairly sizable retirement bump. Our property, obviously, because we rely on property tax dollars, we know what's happening to our properties, and so that's going to have an impact on us. We've yet to, you know, have a hard number that we're utilizing, but we do definitely have many options on the radar right now.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Irwin.
Actually, I'd like to, thank you. I would like to ask the consultants to come up. I thought that you guys have done a great job on all your reports, but this one is especially concise and, I think, very clear reasoning on why we should move the station, and whether the difference between, the discrepancy between is a million dollars or $6 million, I still think that this is the most crucial thing, to have that station moved. So I'd like to know how, you know, your report seems to indicate that you think that the station would be moved. How necessary do you think it is?
Well, Councilmember Jeff Bowman, it's good to see you all again. I would submit to you that, given all things being equal that have been discussed here tonight, you have a fire station, and using the numbers that were provided to us, the numbers that were offered to us, were that Station 33 responded to 211 calls during the period of time given to us, and I believe that's 2005. So obviously, that data is no longer accurate, but that was the data we were provided by which to make our report. Station 31's annual response numbers were 1,839. That's a significant difference. And 1,839 calls, reduced by 400, which they estimated Station 33 would pick up if that station were moved easterly to Petrerro and Westlake, brings the other number commensurately down. All those things being equal, it makes, it's so absolutely clear to me that that fire station needs to be moved in an easterly direction, specifically to that spot that was identified at Westlake and Petrerro. It just, the data are so clear to me. And I think it's also important to remember that, you brought up the item, or the issue, that about 70% to 80% of the time, regardless of whether you're using dynamic dispatching, using automatic vehicle location, those folks are in quarters. So the majority of the time, they are going to be in the station, which means they've got a two, a mile and a half to two-mile drive to get to the center of town, which is where the new station has been identified for location. So, and I also want to make sure you all understand that the averaging of total responses is great unless you live outside of that average area and you have the heart attack. You want to make sure that that fire station is serving the greatest number of constituents, specifically to Thousand Oaks, since that's the area you're most concerned with. And from a fire chief's perspective, the obvious answer to that is, the station needs to be moved easterly.
Thank you very much for that answer. And so, have you seen this in other districts where there's such a discrepancy between what a city wants and what the Board of Supervisors is interested in?
That's always an interesting question. And Councilmember Gillette, I think your comments are right on the money. This appears clearly to be a political issue. The data remain the same. I haven't worked in an agency that has city and county responsibilities. I've only worked specifically for counties, but I have seen issues like this. In fact, in Orange County, the City of Irvine has gone through this same discussion on many occasions. In most cases, I will say, in Orange County, the issues have been resolved through the political process, but I think it's been much more successful there because they are members of a joint powers authority who govern all activities of the fire authority in Orange County, as opposed to the Board of Supervisors having a discussion with the city council. And I think that's why it's worked better in that environment.
I think you, when you initially came, you talked a little bit about the JPA down there in Irvine. So could you, because I look at the whole detachment process as very difficult, and you have to get the approval of LAFCO now, what is the process for a JPA? Could it be brought up, let's say, by the city managers? Or how could we go about looking at a different form of governance?
John Goss, you would still have to go through a detachment process from the various entities that would become part of the JPA, so there would still be a need for discussion and negotiation with the district and/or the county. So there would still be a process you'd have to go through.
But would it be as difficult as, let's say, Thousand Oaks forming their own, well, okay, let me ask this. If we were to say we want to form our own police, fire department, we'd have to get approval of the entire district, correct?
You would have to go through LAFCO, you'd have to detach, and then the key would be negotiating a property tax sharing agreement with the county. And whether you'd get the full benefit of the property tax you generate, you know, that's really a very open question. And so if you're having a political issue over location of the station, I could imagine you might have a political issue over negotiating a property tax sharing agreement, as you would even in creating a JPA. So I'm not sure there's an easy road. There's really some need to come to resolution with some of these issues with the county.
Okay. And in Irvine, the big issue was that there was an unequal distribution of property tax, is that correct?
I think they were, they consider themselves, they may not have used this term as a donor city, but when we did our study, you know, about a year and a half ago, what we discovered was, of course, as Jeff just pointed out, you know, they're part of a different entity, they're part of a JPA, so they're able to work these issues out. But one thing that I learned in doing that research and looking at that operation, was the district, or the JPA, I should say, the authority, was building like two or three new fire stations in Irvine to provide better service to that community.
And how many people are on the JPA there in Orange County?
There's like 23. There's a couple from the Board of Supervisors, and then each city has a representative.
Okay, so it's 21 cities and two people from the Board of Supervisors. Okay. Thank you very much for that information, gentlemen.
Any other questions?
I have one before you go away, or a couple perhaps.
Okay.
Are there a lot of different models that districts use to assess the value of the services delivered?
There are certainly different assumptions you can use. What we did was, we took the, went through with the staff, and on the expenditure side, we took all the different stations, and particularly those that serve Thousand Oaks, calculated the number, the amount of staff and equipment and this sort of thing for each station, and then with their concurrence, came up with a percentage that that station served Thousand Oaks or didn't serve Thousand Oaks. And that came up with, you know, with an expenditure statement. I think what the main difference, though, was really is on the other side, is on the revenue side. Because if you, I don't know if you have the report in front, you know, that was distributed in your packet or not, but in the appendix that I'm looking at, it points out that in terms of operating expenditure versus net AB 8 tax revenue, your property tax revenue, there was only a surplus or donor status of about $377,000. Every other jurisdiction, even the unincorporated area, were in the negative amount. But then, there's the redevelopment pass-through. And also, just as there are certain expenditures that are unique just to the district and should not be spread among the cities, there's also revenues that are unique to the district that should not be spread among the cities. But there was still, and after having gone through it with their finance person and going through their revenue statement in detail, there was like another $12 to $14 million in non-property tax revenue that was apportioned. And that's how we got up to the $5 to $6 million range. So I think the difference, if you just looked at property tax and expenditure and the pass-through, Chief LaPlante's probably correct, it's probably about $1 million, $1.5 million. But when you take the non-property tax revenue and distribute it among the cities, either by population or calls for service, you know, that's where you get a range, then you come up with, you know, with the donor status that you have. And, you know, if you don't mind, we, there's a chart on page 43 of the report that indicated the population of Thousand Oaks was about 27%, just slightly under 20% of the district, 27% of the district. The calls for service were just slightly over 27% of the district, but the percent of AB 8 revenue or property tax revenue is 32%. Almost a third of all the property tax revenue for the district comes from Thousand Oaks. And yet, the percentage of operating expense was about 24%. And this is the only area where there's that much of a differential. And as a fact, if you go to the unincorporated area that has like 20% of the population, 20% of the calls, they have like 25% of the AB 8 revenue, but 32% of the operating expense. So, you know, if you're looking at some way to show that, yes, you know, your revenue generated from this community supports the unincorporated areas, I thought the chart on page 43 made that point, you know, a little over a year ago. So, but you're right, there are different ways of looking at it, and you can use different assumptions, absolutely.
Do you see a discrepancy of this nature in revenues in a lot of your locations when you do studies? Is this common to see this kind of, this sort of discrepancy?
You're going to find that any place where you have a regional service provided to incorporate it in unincorporated areas. You know, there's definitely going to be differential. And you, I think, Councilmember Fox made the point that, you know, there probably will be some uneven issues there. You know, probably not as extreme as this, but, you know.
Hard to get away from the donor status.
It's hard to what?
Get away from the donor status.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much. Are there any other questions? So, Mr. Gillette?
Thank you. I don't have any more questions as a consultant. I just, we've been at this now for quite a while, and it's going to get us going in some direction here. To both Chief Nestor and Chief LaPlante, I just wanted to thank both of you very much for coming down, and, you know, we have to deal with you, because we don't seem to be able to get to the next level of this thing, to start working towards some form of resolution. So thank you very much to both of you. And I wanted to say, in conclusion, from my standpoint, the, as far as I'm concerned, my responsibility and the responsibility of the Thousand Oaks City Council is to provide the absolute finest public safety services at the absolute very best cost. Those are the two things. And I'm trying to simplify a very complex issue. The fire station issue flies in the face of the very best cost. And I certainly hope and feel for the residents in the Westlake portion of Thousand Oaks that have a heart attack waiting for a paramedic, a fire department paramedic that have to wait an extra two minutes, because politics has gotten in the way and that station can't be moved. So I feel it's our obligation to do what we can to try and, I've heard repeatedly the terms discussion, negotiation, discuss, talk, what have you. But when you can't find somebody to talk to, and you see an injustice that continues to repeat itself, it breeds frustration, especially in a service that's as critically important as our fire protection. The other side of this equation in public safety, the police contract with Ventura County Sheriff's Department, every five years, we do a complete audit. Each year, the contract is looked at, renegotiated. That contract is so defined that they know, they can amortize the cost of flashlight batteries. And yet, we have this major expense in the other leg of this, of this component, of this public safety component. We know there's something very, very wrong there. We have had all of this information given to us on the inequity of it, and we need to find some way to get someone to talk to us to start to address this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gillette. Before any motions are made, you're just going to make a comment?
Yeah, I just have a few questions, Mr. Minnick, maybe even the consultants, but Mr. Minnick, you know, one of the things that I think was been raised, I think Mr. Gillette raised it, was a full audit, full forensic audit of the district. How is that different from the consultant's report? And what would we do to ensure that the data that came out of that audit, regardless of outcome, was agreed upon between the district and the person doing the auditing? Is there some criteria or industry standard, my sense, that would define criteria first, and then once the criteria is identified, then the audit is conducted and the numbers, they say what they say? That would be my sense.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I think I understand the question, and it would be predicated on what is it that is desired to be accomplished through the audit? For example, this was an operational and financial review of the services provided to the residents of the City of Thousand Oaks, residents and businesses, and looked at the revenues derived here. This was not a full-blown audit by a CPA firm coming in and doing a multi-year analysis. So it really is a question of how much analysis do you want, what do you want to specifically look at, and that could be pursued.
All right, well, you know, I think we'd have to rely on staff, and I think, you know, just for openers, I think what Mr. Goss pointed out, it seems pretty basic to me, but, you know, apparently, we do have dispute with respect to data, and there are ways to reconcile a dispute regarding data that then drives the discussion, at least in part, at least in part. So I think we need to explore getting to a place where we can agree, hopefully, we can agree with the district and the city on a methodology that can pass industry standards, make sense to the council, and is not going to give us, not going to give us to a predetermined number on either side of the equation. That's the first thing. Second thing is, I think we need to at least make a comparison between Thousand Oaks and like cities, and I think Simi Valley is the closest we have to that. So I think the analysis has to include, at least in part, analysis of, I think, Mr. Goss threw some numbers out with respect to.
Page 43.
Yeah. The items listed on page 43, and I'm not going to go through all that, but some analysis to compare city versus city and where we are at, that would be interesting. And I'll tell you why I think that's important, because in fact, this is going to be a political discussion. That's something that will resonate with the folks of Thousand Oaks, that look at Simi Valley as a comparable city, essentially the same level of service, they do have their own police department, but that's a conversation that I think we can easily have with the people of Thousand Oaks, depending on what the numbers say. So that would be the, that would be the second thing that I think we would look at with respect to the, you know, getting some audit or some agreement on what the data says. And then for the council, I think some things that we might want to think about, once that data comes in and we can agree on the data, then I think having some community meetings in the Westlake area make a lot of sense. That, and, you're not getting too far out here, but I think, of course, the district would be invited to that, and even the consultants, that would make sense. So we could kind of bring this information, share it with members of the, particularly the Westlake area, but really, this is a citywide issue. And I think the fire district did a good job of, at least, you know, on the surface, explaining that what happens one place of the city actually affects what's going on in another part of the city. If you're the unfortunate person to have the third heart attack, while not likely, it does happen, you're going to get a delayed response. Because in our industry, we call them collisions, I'm sure they do the same thing out here, and you're just going to wait for the next engine company and/or ambulance or paramedic resource. So it is a citywide issue, and it's something that we need to have a discussion citywide, but certainly, the direct impact is the folks that live in the Westlake area of Thousand Oaks. And then, once we have the community meetings, if we still don't have some And then, once we have the community meetings, if, if we still don't have some interest on the part of the county, specifically the supervisor, to have a discussion, then I think we have to look at an advisory vote on the next ballot, or the next general election or primary election. Not a, not a special election, but the next primary election, we need to have an advisory vote by the city as a whole on whatever options would be laid out through these community discussions, and take it to the voters. And let them tell us, are they satisfied, as Chief Nestor points out, are they satisfied with adequate fire protection, given the amount of dollars that we're spending? Or do they, do they think that the city council needs to explore other alternatives? I don't know what those would be, I'm just trying to lay out a roadmap here from a political perspective, without throwing a lot of rocks, of how we could have this discussion, this debate, and engage the folks that we're elected to represent and who we work for, and that's the citizens of Thousand Oaks. And in this particular case, those folks that live in the Westlake area. So, those would be my general comments, in terms of a roadmap of where we would go.
Thank you, Mr. Minnick. You have a further comment?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this has been an excellent discussion here tonight. It's been many years in the making. I, I do wanna offer some sort of summary comments, what we heard here tonight. But on this whole issue about the revenue to expenditure gap, well, the individuals who spoke to you tonight from the fire district are experts in managing their fire operation and providing good service to, to our businesses and residents. We have a lot of faith and confidence and trust in the consultants, and the fire district was involved in selecting the consulting team and working with them every step along the way. Again, it is the fire department's data. I also have a lot of confidence and faith in your finance, former finance director and your current finance director and their staff who were involved. So, we, we would stand behind the accuracy of the data. The data is what the data are, I guess you would say, they're plural, but they, they are certainly accurate. From, as your city manager and your finance director here, we don't have any issues with the numbers. We think they're a little bit lower than, than they really are. But that's a whole nother issue, and a further audit would reveal that. So, we would welcome any additional studies. And in fact, there have been some that other cities in this county have looked at fire service issues, and they took a, a look at the, the numbers, and they found the numbers to be somewhat similar. If we were to start fresh today, and here we have a city of one hundred and twenty-eight thousand residents, with nearly eighty thousand jobs and thousands of employers in the community, there's no question, nobody in this room would dispute that the location of that fire station in that part of the town should be at Petrao in, in Westlake. There's no doubt about it, nobody here disputes that. So, but we're not able to start fresh, we, we have some history behind us, and we're, and we're trying to wrestle with that. The sta, in the staff report, we did offer as an alternative, and we conveyed this to the fire chief and the county CEO, that rather than move the Lake Sherwood Fire Station as suggested by the consultants and initially suggested by the county fire chief, leave that station there, and it'll have a hundred or so calls a year, and then build a new station in Westlake. So, the, your staff is not saying you have to move the station, you can leave it there for the rural population, and then build a more suburban, urban station to better serve the residents of Westlake, which gets to the point of, you heard a lot of talk here today about adequate service. Well, we're not an adequate city or an average city. We take pride in providing premier services, and I think we heard the example of the library service, and we had adequate to sub-adequate service there in the seventies, and the city made the decision to form its own, to detach from the county and have its own library. So, we, we believe we should have bet, more than just adequate service, and I, I think the resident, I know the residents and the businesses here would feel the same way. That gets to, the, public safety is the city's major number, number-one responsibility. So, it's really a fundamental public policy question, public safety question, and that's what I struggle with as your city manager, in that from a liability exposure standpoint, the residents and businesses of Westlake are exposed. And we know, the data's very clear, that we know that they deserve better, and we're trying hard as your staff to, to, to get there, and we're having a very hard time. So, it's very frustrating for us as your staff, because we know at the end of the day, something better needs to be done, and we're just simply not able to do it. So, it's been very frustrating. In many respects, it's unconscionable that we, we do nothing. And I know the fire department feels the same way. So, you have a lot of options, you, you heard about some of them tonight, you can simply do nothing and hope in time that the fire district is able to relocate the station. You can do, you can send a second letter, as, as is suggested in here. I heard about doing a, an audit, so you can do a comprehensive operational performance and financial audit of the fire department. We heard about the grand jury being invited to come in and, and take a look. As your staff, we'd be more than happy to explore the, the options and report back in a, in a short timeframe to do that. We heard, uh, holding community forums in Westlake, we heard about having a citywide advisory vote, we heard talk of a joint powers authority, a new form of government, governance. That's exactly what Orange County did, they were frustrated, similar to how you feel here tonight. So, you change who the governing structure is, that's an option. The worst case is you detach from the district and you have your own city fire department. Some cities have done that. Clearly, a city of our size, starting fresh, would have its own fire department. It's not to say we have to, but typically, cities over a hundred thousand do. You could also, we didn't hear talked about tonight, but you could look to join with Moore Park in Simi Valley and have an east county fire department, that's an option. And of course, we heard about contracting with LA County. So, you have a menu of options here, and I just wanted to delineate those for you, and I'm sure there are others that I, that I didn't list. So, with that, staff is prepared to go in whatever direction you so instruct us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Minnick. There is a, a letter in the green packet from Ms. Irwin, who had a conversation with a citizen regarding some information on the subject. Ms. Irwin?
I, the audit, it sounds like, you know, a good idea, but I'm curious how much money it's gonna be and what difference is it gonna make? Is it a million? Is it six million? Is it eight million? If the board of supervisors is still not interested in moving the station, I don't, I'm not sure that that's gonna make any difference. It's, it'll take another six months, and, and we're not necessarily gonna get where we're going. So, I'm, you know, if that's part of a whole motion, I, I suppose I would approve it, I just don't see what the point is. Because the, it, the, the initial report was completely compelling, every letter after has been completely compelling, and they are not listening. So, I, I would really, if, I mean, as a, I would like to at least look at exploring, and maybe it could be very, on a very high level, having the city manager look at what is involved with a joint powers authority. It would be the same fire department, it would just be a different form of governance, and it doesn't have to really, we don't have to go completely into debt, depth on that, but I think it's something that we need to start looking at, because we could do all this, and it still could make no difference.
Mr. Gillette?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I agree with all of the comments that have been made, but at the core of this is the question, why would we wanna do that unless we can point to numbers that we can all rely on? Whether the county agrees with the numbers or not, and the only way we're gonna get there is with an audit. We need to have an audit. We need to know, we have this consultant information, which, when we start hearing about the blend of, of tax increment and other dollars and how they're divided up, that, that brings in something that only the auditors and the actuaries, those are the people that are the experts in this, that can give us the answers that we need. And once we have that, and we know, I, I mean, I'm convinced, based on everything we've looked at for the last two years, that there is a significant disparity between dollars out and service in. But we need, we need to validate that. And if the, if the governing board of the fire district is unwilling or unable to do that, then perhaps, and, I think we should seek the objective third party, the grand jury, and ask them to take a look at it. The other alternatives, the specter of other forms of dispute resolution at this time, just, they, they just have no appeal whatsoever to me, and I'd like to say that we have, have exhausted our administrative remedies to find the answer. And the answer, the question is, what kind of dollars are we talking about? And if, if, if this is, as we believe, the numbers are that significant, that's, and that much of a burden on the, on the taxpayers, the residents of the city of Thousand Oaks, then the rest of these things come into play as a strategy that, okay, we know, we rely on it, that's absolutely right, now what do we do about it? And I think that's, I think that's the first step. So, my suggestion, you want me to try, try and form this into a motion? I'm sorry, are there any other comments, and then I'll, I'll...
And just comment.
Was there a motion?
No, there's no motion afloat.
Okay.
Would, just, hang on just a sec. You'd like to make a comment, Ms. Buildan, opinion?
Well, I will, I will reserve my comments for, after the motion is made, then.
Okay. Okay. They, the motion would be then, that the city correspond with the county to the governing board, to the board of supervisors, the governing, governing board of the fire protection district, and tell them that, I don't wanna use the word demand, but that we insist, as the recipient of services in this, in this municipality, that we want a total and complete audit of the fire, Ventura County Fire Protection District focused on this region, comparing the amount of assets and resources that come out of this community to support the fire protection district versus the cost of services that come back in. That language can be polished, but I think that gets, captures the intent. And that if that is rejected, as the last request was, that we then, oh, and, and, and in that, that we copy the grand jury so that they understand what we're doing, and if they don't initiate it themselves, that if we're unable to get any satisfaction with getting someone to the table to talk about this thing, that we ask the grand jury to do a full investigation and provide recommendations, and that would be, that would be step, step one. That's the motion. Is that, is that clear enough, Mr. City Manager? Is that...
Understood.
Does, does the, let me ask, we've got our finance people up there, do those questions, and you would be involved in, in framing the specifics of this request, but I wanna make sure that the request includes all of the appropriate jargon that is necessary to satisfy the intent, and the intent of the motion is to get the information, how much is going out compared to the cost of what's coming in?
I could see using the basis of the report that you have your consultants do, and have our auditor go in and take another look at the basis of doing that. Doing a full-blown financial audit probably won't get you anything extra, but going in and doing an analysis of the numbers that they've used and talking about the, the process and how we came up with the numbers, and working with the fire district to kinda get to the same solution, because we hear a difference of opinion here, is probably what you're asking for. And I think that would take a lot less work than doing a full, full-blown financial audit.
If that gets us the information we want, and we'll be able to tell when it comes back, if, if it comes back, at least as step one, we have to do some, I, I just can't in good conscience sit for another six months and wait for a report that tells us the same thing, that nobody's willing to talk to us, and another tax year's gone by, and another six million bucks has gone fly, floating out of the community. I mean, I, I, you know, I, I'm an advocate of public safety. I believe that the residents of Ventura County that lived down at Yerba Buena and down at the county line needed a brand-new fire station. But I also know there's no tax base to pay for it. The money to build it had to come from somewhere, as did the new fire station in Oak Park, as do new fire stations in the Upper Ojai. We need to get that answer, and however the question has to be formed, you and, and your finance people are, you're the experts in that, as long as you realize, as long as you understand what information is so critically important to us before we take additional steps and, and move on this. And it appears that there's no, that there's very little optimism on the horizon with the relocating of that fire station, at least under the current, the current political situation that we find ourselves in. And the longer that continues, that equates directly to residents of this city being placed at risk. Thank you.
Mr. Gillette, would it be reasonable to you to include in that letter a very strong request that the county board of supervisors hold a public discussion on relocating the station? And perhaps have them come out and actually say yes or no as to whether or not they have it in their plans?
That, we've already done that, and a restatement of that would be fine as, as part of the body of the letter. I mean, I, what, what the goal here is to create an administrative process that we can work through to public agencies trying to say, serve the residents of the community. We've already been, as it looks, rejected once, but certainly, that, that can be, that will be part of the motion.
Well, I think if it were included, at least this time, there's a little bit of a hammer that goes with the request.
Okay.
Comments to the motion? Ms. Buildan, opinion?
Thank you. So, as I understand it, then, our own finance department, perhaps the internal auditor would conduct the audit, using the consultant's report as a guide?
That's what I was proposing. Yes, we would, we would have the financial report that the consultants did as our basis, and then figure out where the differences lie in terms of our opinion of how much net revenue was coming to the rest of the county versus staying here.
And what if the county were to do its own audit, and then there would still be a big disparity? I mean, that's what I'm wondering. I, I thought if we were to do an audit, it would come from, from a neutral or a third party.
Well, we spent quite a bit of money on this audit, this review so far, and I think we wanna build on that. I think we need to find out if we can come to a conclusion between the two of us, what the differentials are. And that, that's really what I'm hearing, that we haven't really come to an agreement on.
Yeah, certainly.
That would be, save you some money right now, and then if we can't, can't come to some agreement, then we can have that discussion down the road.
Okay, yeah, certainly. You know, I'm glad that, my thoughts earlier are echoed in that we, by my colleagues, and that we need to have some sort of basis and need to agree on the numbers before we can actually chip away at some of the other major issues. So, at least there's agreement in that. And what do you anticipate the timeframe to be?
Right now, the auditor's working on a major audit that, on behalf of the city, and so he won't be free probably for another month. Two months? Two months.
Okay, so, two months, and then maybe another two months max before we would have a report? Mr. Minnick?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, actually, we, we could begin the process of gathering data right away, but for Earl to go in and do his work, they're saying two months for him, but we can have other staff and work cooperatively with the fire district, county auditor controller, whomever, and start gathering facts and information. So, we, we could start that process right away. Right, Candy?
Certainly, we could start collecting data, but he does have another audit in front of him right now that he's completing.
Okay, so, we're getting our money's worth out, out of Mr. Mr. Earl Garland, is it? Okay, thanks.
Further comments? No? Mr. Fox?
Yeah, I just wanna emphasize that, you know, as we enter into this discussion, we, we do need to do our level best to reach some agreement on what the data is. And with all due respect to Chief LaPlante, it seems to me, and Chief Nestor, it seems to me that this really is a, an accounting exercise at this point, rather than putting value on GPS and some of those other things. This, this, what we're looking for is an accounting exercise of what goes in, what goes out, what does it cost? Those are hard numbers, and, and I would hope, and I'm looking at the district now, I would hope that you would be partners in that evaluation. And sir, I would welcome Chief Nestor's comments, because rather than us launching off into some, what I think would be unconstructive exercises, recognizing, Chief, I think now the district realizes this city is very serious about this issue, and we are not going away. And I say that in a cooperative way. That being said, I think there's an opportunity, what Ms. Hong said, is that we can at least come to some agreement on what the data is, what the numbers are, and then, you know, we can decide whether, if it's a million bucks, then we went through a big exercise, and I think everybody can live with a million bucks. I can, I'll tell you upfront. Six, seven, eight million? I think that's a different conversation.
Kevin Nestor, you're right. I, I don't discount the importance of this issue to the city. I do not. But I will commit staff, our staff, to get to a number, and we'll work with city staff, and if, if the consultants are available, we'll work with them. But we'll, we'll commit staff to try to arrive at a number. It's not something that we do as a district, but like I say, you're important to us, it's important to you, so that's what we'll do.
Okay, I think that's, you know, I think that's all we can ask from the district. And then, you know, if it's a political issue, then step back and let the politicians do what they, do what they do, you know? But I, I think from a staff perspective, it's not unreasonable for us to request and expect that we would be able to... expect that we would be able to arrive at a set of numbers on what should be a fairly simple accounting exercise on, on the items Mr. Goss pointed out and some of the other issues that are in the report, without spending another two or $300,000 either.
As it relates to timing for this, I don't have a specific time, but I'm thinking that it would probably be about the September time, and I think that's when we're going to be coming back. You're going to be?
Depends on if the council votes on that recommendation.
Okay, but I'm just, I'm offering up that for, to commit our staff to it, it'd be probably September time that we could have it completed.
Do you think that's, I think that's more than reasonable? Okay, I think that's, okay, very good. All right, I, thanks, Chief. Okay.
Mr. Shulat?
Thank you. As, as we conclude this discussion, I want, I want to comment the way the discussion started out, and that's to Chief LaPlante, Chief Nestor, and to the men and women of the Ventura County Fire Protection District. There has never, to my knowledge, been a question of, nor is there now, nor will there be, a question of the adequacy and the professionalism of the service that the residents of the city of Thousand Oaks receive from the district. We're proud to have this relationship. We, we appreciate the, the service that we receive. This, these issues go far beyond the service levels, and there should never be a question about the professionalism and the service adequacy that we receive. So, I just want to end this discussion on that same note.
Please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Mr. Mitnick, would you please come up with a list of all the options that have been discussed tonight, so that when this study is finally done, we see some numbers before us, we, we know what the choices are? Okay? Thank you. Okay, we now go to a study session of user fees. So, Mr. Adams?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tonight, staff is bringing the city's user fees before you for a public meeting and this study session. Listed here are the three recommendations the city, or staff is making. One is to receive the information on user fees and development impact fees. Number two is to conduct this public meeting and study session and give appropriate feedback. And number three will be to schedule a public hearing for April 26, or April 21 of 2009. This is tonight's format. Staff will be discussing the background and history of the city's user fees, as well as the various fees by departments, new fees, homeowner exemption fees, development impact fees, and BAG recommendations related to user fees. BAG recommendations is the brainstorming action group that was formed by city staff back in the month of February. Staff will end this discussion with its recommendations, questions and answers from staff, for City Council and Council Direction. The last review and staff update was completed in, in 2007 as part of that two-year fiscal budget. When we did a comprehensive, in that year, we did do a comprehensive full-cost study for development impact, or development-related fees consisting of fees in the community development and public works. Prior to that cost study, the last cost study we had done was in 1999. User fees include fines, penalties, rates, and assessments. It's more than just the user fees for cost recovery. As part of the two-year budget process, city staff reviews and updates user fees based on the estimated cost of providing services. This review looks at time and materials, the processes and methodologies of establishing the fees, and then identifying new fees. For fiscal year 2009 through 2011, the increase in development-related user fees were based mostly on the Consumer Price Index of all urban consumers for the last two years, and that's from June 2006 through June of 2008. This is consistent with past practice, where staff uses a comprehensive cost study as its foundation, which we did in 2007. And at that point, we just apply the CPI to establish new fees. There is one exception to this, in this year, specifically in planning. When we brought the full-cost study to you in 2007, planning was not at council policy, which is full-cost recovery. In this proposal, we are recommending increases of 20% in some planning fees. This was comparable to what we did in 2007. At that point, we gave you a, a plan to try to increase planning fees higher than CPI to get us up to full-cost recovery. I want to mention for the theater, we are not raising rental rates, but we are recommending, recommending increases to labor rates, and so we have a two-year increase in the labor rates at 6.05%. This is just the council policy related to full-cost recovery back in 1999, as the Community Budget Task Force made a recommendation that the council establish a full-cost recovery policy for fees. This is the policy in which council adopted back in 99. Next slide is the definition of what a user fee is, which is a fee or rate charged to an individual or group that receives a private benefit from services provided by the city. In determining fees, we include everything from personnel, materials, and overhead. This chart shows, gives examples of fees versus taxes. On one end, we have a hundred, or 100% private benefit. An example of this would be building and safety fees, specific to a body or a person or an entity receiving these benefit. On the other side, we have 100% public benefit, which is public, public safety or police services, in which that is 100% supported by tax dollars. The scope of the fees tonight cover multi, all of the departments for the city. We also have some citywide fees. The user fee manual, which is approximately 300 pages, has a table of contents. It also has the front section, which is section one. This is the detail sheet that establishes each fees and gives background to each of the fees. Section two, the back section, actually provides comparisons from 2007 to the current fees proposed for 2009. We start briefly going over each department, very briefly talk about the fees that they have and the fees that they might be recommending increases to, and include some new fees. For city clerk, they have four fees, no changes to their current fees. There is one recommendation on a new fee, which is for verification of residency. In looking at this fee, staff did contact other cities that provide the service, determined that other cities were comparable in our, in our suggested proposed rate. $20 refers to the fully burdened rate of having staff spend time on the verification of residency. Citywide fees, there's 11 fees under this category. Staff is only recommending increases in fees for rental rates. One of the BAG recommendations was to raise rental rates to cover costs related to janitorial and opening up and locking facilities. This was applied to all groups. As you know, there are three groups in which the city provides rental, rental of rooms. In looking at this, staff is not recommending increases or any fee for nonprofits that rent rooms during business hours. This would not cover the costs if there was costs related to janitorial, but staff is recommending not to, to establish fees for nonprofits for the use of rental, for, for rooms at, at city facilities. Second one, or the next one is theaters, community and cultural services. The theater department has 42 fees. As mentioned earlier, there's no recommended increases to rental rates, parking rates, subscription fees, and facility charges. Staff is recommending increases to labor rates. Labor rates were changed in 2007. Staff is recommending a 6.05% increase from the change in costs from 2007 to 2009. Just please note that the city is going through its cultural arts review. There may be recommendations that might impact user fees specifically related to either labor rates or even rental rates. Next, building and safety. Building and safety has 24 fees. Because of the change in activity and specifically because of the economic conditions, staff is not recommending changes at, for building and safety fees. But we are doing a review. We've hired an independent consultant who did the cost study in 2007 to, to look at building and safety fees and to do analysis on how we change the fee for the base, based on activity that we are currently having. So, at this point, we're not recommending changes. We will bring any recommendations for changes to those fees back in the fall of 2009. Next, planning and code compliance. There are a total of 80 fees. Planning, we did not apply one increase across all fees for planning. Some fees specifically deposits, which aren't necessarily fees, but no increases to deposits that are made by potential applicants. For fees that, there were certain fees that were increased by CPI, which is 8.5%. There were other fees that were raised by 20% to get closer to full-cost recovery. Even with those increases, they're, for the most part, they're still substantially less than full-cost recovery. The staff's plan was to, over the next three to four user fee periods, to raise fees up to full-cost recovery. And so, this is the first year in doing that. Planning does have a new fee, sell and wire, or actually not a new fee, a deposit for seat, sell and wireless communication facilities. This amount is for the consultant that the city hires, and then there is an application fee as well. Further, city did look at film permit fees. Staff is working on a revised ordinance to be, be brought back to city council. There are fees that are in here to address or to assist in that ordinance implementation related to an application process and, and cost recovery in the code compliance area. And finally, homeowners exemptions. Homeowner exemptions are, are exceptions to full-cost recovery. In prior reviews, the city council determines prices for certain fees specifically related to homeowners. Single-family dwellings would be subsidized or would not be full-cost recovery. Here's the listing of the 12 fees, just for your reference. It's also attachment one in the packet. For finance, finance has a total of 14 fees. Minimal changes were to most fees. There were some CPI increases. One of the BAG recommendations was to increase disabled parking citation cancellation fee. Per state code, we can raise it to $25. We are only recommending an increase from 10 to $15. This is mainly for disabled people who do not display their placard but get the, but get the citation is really the reason why that, they pay that fee. If they violate the code, which usually is crossing, or parking over the crosshatch, this is not, they have to pay the full, the full fine. Also, just want to mention, Los Robles golf fees are not included in this user fees, as you're aware. We did have an agreement with the operator who has caps on how much they can raise fees. They do a market survey and establish fees accordingly. For the library, they have 10 fees. They are recommending a new fee, which is for test proctoring fee. They're recommending $50 per hour plus $25 for any additional hours. One of the fees we're looking to eliminate is the interlibrary request fee, which is the request to transfer books between the two branches. Next, we have the police fees. There are a total of seven fees. The major fee that was modified was the admin, administrative fee for towing. Currently, we have a fee of $140, which is applicable to all types of toes. In surveying various other cities in the county, what was clear was they had tier rates pretty consistent through the county. The dollar amounts do range. Thousand Oaks Police Department is recommending a tiered rate going from 160 for a standard tow all the way up to $400 for a DDOI tow. For public works, they have a total of 68 fees. They have four new fees. For their, for most of their fees, they did apply a CPI. They are very close to cost recovery in public works, so it was easy to apply the CPI for the increased costs. The new fourth, here are the new fourth, the new fees. Missile code amendment, which is similar to what planning or community development charges. After-hours construction permit, this is for requests for after-hours inspections. They also are implementing a, a fee for appeals on admin and traffic, admin or transportation committee decisions. Another new one is the stormwater inspection fee, which is part of our permits. They're also recommending a removal of fee, and because this is covered under our minor mod fee. Let me briefly talk about a couple fees that we're not going to be talking tonight about, that have normally been part of the process. First, water fee. As you know, the financial plan is in review, is in the process of being reviewed. Staff is working to implement tiered rates. Water quality charges, we hear from MWD, will be substantially increased for the wholesale cost of water. So, with that, staff is planning on breeding back rate increases or fee increase for water rates in the fall of 2009. Same goes with the wastewater fee. The financial plan is in review. We don't anticipate any increases in the fees, but this will also be brought back in the fall, or hopefully the summer, but the fall at the latest. Development impact fees, highlighted in your report, there are 10 transportation development impact fees. Currently, the index actually had a decrease, which is not necessarily normal. We are not recommending a decrease in the fee, and we're, and, and the reason why is because in past years, when there have been substantial increases, we have not increased it the full amount. So, we are going to take in the account for the next time we go that, in 2011, when we come back, we will take into account the reduction that would have occurred this time. The other fee that's in development impact fees is a police facilities charge, which is going to increase 9.1%. This is based on the cost of our investments over the last two years, and so it's unrelated to the construction cost index, but it is related to our interest income. Affordable housing fees. Normally, as you know, we, we recently adopted a housing ordinance that has two fees specifically related to in-lu housing and linkage fees for commercial development. Normally, these fees would be part of this study as well. Staff is still working on these fees and plans to bring the fees back at a later date, hopefully by July. The BAG, we briefly talked about the BAG and, and the recommendations. This just sort of goes over what they had done during the month of February. The BAG had a lot of recommendations. We tried to summarize them in your attachment four. We actually highlighted the ones that we did implement, and we implemented the ones that were easily implemented, and we're still studying some of the other ones. With that, I'm going to go to, straight to the recommendations. Staff is available for questions and, and at council's pleasure.
Thank you very much. Questions for staff? Guys? Questions for staff? No? Mr. Shulat? You were looking?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple things. On your slide number 13, community and cultural services, to support the $8 parking fee in the parking structure? When's the last time we did an analysis of usage to find out for the performances that charge that? Is that structure filling up? Or if we reduce the fees, would more people be inclined to use it? Ergo, making up the difference or even perhaps making more, generating more revenue?
Great timing for this question.
I'm sorry?
Great timing for this question.
Oh, thank you.
We are currently working with a parking consultant, and actually had them out over the past week doing that analysis. They're going to, they did look at the shows this weekend. They looked at operations over the past few days. We anticipate having a report within the next 30 days, which would then be brought to the Capitol Facilities Committee, hopefully in the next 60 days.
Okay, excellent, because also, it's becoming increasingly obvious that there are not sufficient handicap parking places to accommodate the clients that need them. handicap parking places to accommodate the clients that need them. Sunday's Theater League presentation was a good example. First of all, there are insufficient handicap parking places to accommodate the demand, and secondly, it's extremely cumbersome for people to get in and out of there, which may require looking at new circulation in that facility. So I assume all of this will be taken into this study.
Interesting point. I personally met with them yesterday morning and with their observations over the weekend. That was one of their first observations was, they saw people that wanted access to disabled spots showing up hours prior to the performance because those, even though we meet the ADA code and we're actually in excess of the ADA code, the clientele that goes to there, there's just not enough disabled parking. And so that will be part of the recommendation, is looking at how much more spaces we can provide for disabled parking.
Okay, and I know there was an attempt to try and reduce traffic, well, actually eliminate traffic in the traffic circle. And I assume because of community insistence, that's now allowed again. And from my perspective, putting that many cars interfacing directly with pedestrians where they're crossing each other's paths is a, is, it creates a serious situation. I obviously don't have an answer to it, but there's, it's not a healthy environment. Okay.
They made the same observation, and that will be included as well.
I had two others that I wanted. Oh, could you go over again for me? I don't, didn't quite get that on slide 19. The F-06A disabled parking citation cancellation fee. What is that about again?
We commonly, people are cited for not display, not displaying their placards. For whatever reason, as you know, you have to hang it up in the mirror, and of course, that pares your vision when you're driving, and people put it down and put it under their seat and their glove box, whatever. And so they don't have a displayed placard. And so volunteer and policing will write a citation. They just forgot to put it up. They come into the city hall, we charge them a fee for the cancellation. And the current fee was $10. By the vehicle code, you can charge up to $25. We're recommending $15.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any additional questions? Yes, Mr. Fox. Mr. Fox, can you hang on for just a minute?
Sure.
And Mr. Chala, you want to wrap it up?
Okay, thank you. On your slide 16, the film permit fees, when do we expect to get a report back on the new policy on film permits? That's...
I believe it will be in May of 2009, and so we're going to bring the ordinance at that time. Hopefully, the fees that we've developed in this user fee manual could be applied to the ordinance.
Okay, they're being looked at at the same, together?
Correct. We are working with or community development, and they're anticipating some of the fees based on some of the direction they've received for the ordinance.
Okay, fine. Thank you very much.
Mr. Fox?
On your slide 17, I think it's, I don't recall seeing it, but it may be in the report. For example, block party, it's a, the permit is $35?
Currently, yes.
And we're proposing it to go to 40?
Yes, we are.
How's that compared to other cities?
I don't, I've not done a comparison. We could do that for a report back.
You know, here's my question is that, you know, I know the budget task force did this, and I'm very hesitant about recommending changes, but I also think we need to look at things that promote community. And I'm struck by the type of, you know, 4th of July block parties, things like that, that actually strengthen communities. I don't think 40 bucks really is going to break anybody, but I do think that to some degree, we subsidize other issues that we deem a community-wide benefit. How many block party permits do we have per year?
We're looking up the activity levels.
And then while you're looking at that, I'm just curious. Under library, we're talking about increasing the test proctoring fee from 25 to 50 bucks. Just curious, how often do we do that?
Let me get, repeat the question. I was listening to...
I just, the block party.
Okay.
How many block party permits?
About 15 a year.
15, 1.5?
Yes, 1.5. Apparently, for National Night Out, we waive the fee for National Night Out by council direction.
Okay, so I'm assuming the 15 is not including the National Night Out?
Correct.
Okay. So we're talking about a total of $150?
Of an increase.
Right. And then you guys are checking on the test proctoring?
Yes, we give about, we proctor about 100 tests per year. And proctoring involves actually staying in the room the entire time the test is given. And the $50 reflects the volunteer coordinator's salary plus benefits.
Okay.
And we do anticipate there'll be a slight drop this next year because we understand Lorraine is doing their own proctoring now, so it may drop 30 percent.
And the cost recovery for the block party, I'm assuming is the salary for somebody at the counter to issue the permit? That's the full cost recovery? It's full cost recovery, right?
No, it is not.
Oh, okay.
Let me, maybe I should explain a little clearer. On the homeowner exemptions, which is your slides 17 and 18, those are ones that are not even considered close to cost recovery.
Okay.
If we look at them, and I'm not going to use the block party as the example, but on average, it's approximately 15 to 20 percent is what we're showing as far as the fee. It's only really covering 15 to 20 percent of the cost of doing that service.
We have 15 a year?
15 a year. But the 15 to 20 percent is what, that, the cost, the fee that we're charging is only recovering 15 to 20 percent of the cost on average for the homeowner exemptions.
Does anybody have any more questions?
Seeing no more questions, would you like to make a motion? Oh, Ms. Bill DeLaPena has one.
Thank you. I have a question regarding the labor for theaters. We had a discussion about labor already during the last council meeting or the one before last. There is a 6.5 percent increase adjusted for that. Is that part of the union negotiations and the agreement that we have, the MOU?
Yes, yes. I mean, the 6.05 is what the cost, the labor costs have increased over two years. And so it's not just the salary aspect, but it's also the benefit cost. So again, we're increasing what the rate was by 6 percent because that's how much it's changed over the last two years. Well, if you're going to say the average cost of the actual, average increase over the last three years has been 3 percent.
3 percent, and it is being raised to 6.05, not 5.0, but 0.5.
Yeah, okay.
If the average increase, okay, so it's three per year and you're increasing it to six?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Fox? Did you want to make a motion?
The, you know, absent any other issues, I'm going to move that the staff recommendations, items one, two, and three.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bill DeLaPena? One second.
We have to vote.
Okay. I just needed to reread the recommendations. Thank you. Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you very much. At this time, we're going to have a slight change of pace, and Ms. Habana is going to announce a closed session.
Because I believe that the council's going to take a break, correct?
The council is going to take a break, yes ma'am.
So I'm going to re-close session that we can possibly cover some of that during the break. Conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, 1,200 Newberry LLC versus the City of Thousand Oaks, and it's pursuant to government code section 54, 956.9 subsection A. And conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure pursuant to government code section 54, 956.9 subsection B, one potential case.
Hold on for just a second. Yeah. It's in deliberation. Say what? Go ahead. Okay. Yeah, we will go into closed session right now. Pick up 9B. Mr. Chang?
Good evening, mayors and members of council. For your consideration tonight, initiation of change to general plan land use elements and those specific plan and zone change, public-owned open space parcel are presented. This parcel involving the applications are owned by public agencies such as City of Thousand Oaks, COSCOT, CRPD. Those parcels are for open space purposes. Through the years, city or other public agency has purchased open space parcel through either purchase, give, or dedication in conjunction with a development project. One of the parcel is recently acquired Site I located on the west side of Patero. When city purchase a parcel to be used for open space purpose, the parcel does not automatically change the zoning nor general plan destination to open space. Amendment procedures such as general plan amendments or zone change are required to reflect the new land use destinations. This is considered as a cleanup update to the parcels that were recently acquired. The last similar citywide amendments were back, were done back in 1997. Staff has identified 33 areas throughout the city general planning area where the general plans amendments or zone change are required. Those areas are attached tables or maps for your reference. If the council decides to initiate the amendments, the application will then be referred to planning commission for review and recommendation. Follow the planning commission's recommendation, the amendments will then be presented to council for public hearing and final decision. This concludes staff's presentation, and staff is ready for any question.
Thank you very much. Any questions of staff? Motion?
Yes.
Move to approve staff recommendation of the initiation of the general plan amendments.
Thank you. Any comments? Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you very much. Who's presenting dial-a-ride? Ms. Watkins says?
I'll start off.
Okay, great.
Mayor Clancy, members of city council, good evening. The item before you is the consideration of the MV Transportation Agreement and Lease. This is the fixed route, dial-a-ride, and transportation center lease. I'd like to introduce Graham Watts. Graham has been the project manager at the Service Center, putting together this program. And then I think you all know Roy Myers. Roy has been our transportation analyst for a number of years, so I'll let them continue with the presentation.
Yes, Mayor Clancy and members of city council. The report before you tonight outlines the evolution of the city's bus transit system and dial-a-ride services. It also includes a description of past contracted services since the program's inception in 1981. In the audience tonight and available for any questions are some MV Transportation Company representatives. I'm Mr. W.C. Pill, Vice President, Kevin Clicker, Chief Operating Officer, as well as Leland Peterson, Nathan Smith, Dwight Sayer, and Angel Arizola. Consistent with past practices and council direction at the April 2008 Transportation Study Session, staff has completed an RFP process for the hiring of a transit operator that addresses longstanding council goals for maintaining a high standard for public transit. The following slides provide a background of program goals, recent system improvements, a review of the contractor selection process, and key elements of the proposed operator agreement and office space lease at the transportation center. As you'll see, some of the key elements of the transportation goals include providing a balanced, fully integrated system that supports regional transit facilities, professional service for dial-a-ride and transit fixed route service, that also maximizes use of local and state transportation funding, and ongoing support of air quality programs such as van pooling. The service improvements for the, over the last few years include a variety of different elements, some of which include ticket sales recently added to the transportation center and office space dial-a-ride services which offer a connection and regional facility for other transit systems. We've also converted our buses to clean burning natural gas and continue to make enhancements to the visibility of the program through the website, a number of features including brochure enhancements, color scheme, and bus shelters throughout the city. Technology continues to be a priority of the program and is a key part of our new contract, and the continued use of bike safety combination with transit improvements is important. With the transportation center, I think it's important to note that the facility itself right now, beyond its recent expansion, is running at about 90 percent capacity. We continue to fully utilize the parking area for van pooling use. Back in September 2008, the city initiated an RFP process. That process resulted in five proposals being evaluated by an RFP review committee of select staff that were, have an area of expertise in different fields. The firms were all interviewed and ranked on responses to key areas of experience, budget, clarity, program reporting, and a number of other areas in addition to overall experience. All the firms exhibited a variety of different strengths and strengths and abilities, and all were very capable. However, MV Transportation came out, ranked the highest of all the companies. Those key areas MV excelled in had to do with experience, service improvements, and overall budget, a commitment to improved customer service, and a big priority was to maintain the existing project manager already on site with the existing program. Other key factors for the selection included acknowledgement by company officials of some errors in the past and a recommitment to make some improvements to customer service to provide greater oversight and accountability. We've also had some other features added that include a contract satisfaction guarantee, a $50,000 guarantee to retain the current project manager that so far has done an excellent job, very strict performance standards, and liquidated damages built into the contract. We also have added a consumer advocate type position that will work directly with the senior disabled and visually impaired residents of Thousand Oaks. It's also important to note that MV has made an extra commitment to safety and driver note that MV has made an extra commitment to safety and driver training, as well as increasing driver wages and benefits to retain the highest quality drivers for both dial-a-ride and fixed route. Some other key elements of the agreement, as noted in your report, have to do with a three-year agreement for continuation of a weekday fixed route service, and then a seven-day dial-a-ride service, door-to-door service. Office space would then run concurrently with the agreement through a lease at the transportation center, where again they would operate and connect with other systems for consistency of the service. It's also important to note that the new agreement would include three, not two, three-fueled, three-natural gas-fueled cutaway-type vehicles would be provided in the dial-a-ride vehicle program. These would be replacing 2003 existing vehicles that dial-a-ride, I'm sorry, that MV is using. And then, of course, as I said, the strict performance standards are to be maintained. The last slide has to do with some transit trends. I just wanted to point out, that can be further elaborated by Mr. Myers, but ridership continues to increase, and that increase is about 52% since 2000. The fares revenue has increased, having to do primarily with adult ridership increasing, and then the dial-a-ride readership seems to increase as well at about 3%. Another important element of all of this, of course, is that Thousand Oaks provides local service, and that our working relationship with a county, as the county transportation provider, also includes a transportation-type study that will evaluate all different types of systems. That concludes staff's report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions? Yes, Mr. Gillette?
Good evening, Mr. Watts.
Good evening.
Based on the experience that you all have in dealing with this system, and there routinely are questions about certain aspects of the system. We have people that communicate regularly, their, the satisfaction level they have, and the dissatisfaction level that they have, and recognizing that there, when you're dealing with people and transportation issues and trying to provide a service, there will always be certain concerns. And I, I'm sense, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to get a feel for our sensitivity to those users, this primarily dial-a-ride, that have questions on service issues, treatment, et cetera, their ability to get their concerns, to express their concerns to the system, and how those concerns, I intentionally avoiding complaints, but concerns expressed, and suggestions too, because some of these folks, because they're the ones that have the most experience as the, as the user. How do we, how are we looking at improving the mechanism for reporting or bringing forward concerns and addressing them?
One of the items that Graham Watts indicated is we're going to have a advocate that will meet with the, with all the constituents in our area, meeting at the Goldwood Senior Center, or wherever they may set up as a location. Right now, we have quite a unit of people that meet regularly at the Goldwood Senior Center that are part of the Braille Institute, and he will do an outreach to them, and also to other seniors and other disabled people. We'll also, at the transportation center, have a ambassador that will meet, provide information, and listen to concerns of all the people that come through that site.
Do we, excuse me, does the system provide something to the users to encourage their input into, into needs, unmet needs, or concerns about how the program operates? Do we, is there something, is there some sort of material that's provided, or encourage, where we encourage folks to say, look, if there's something that's happening here, or that you question, or you don't, we, here's how, here's how you do it. Here's, here's how you bring those things forward.
Yes, sir. As we, we did with the fixed route system, we implemented a comment card-type system onboard that provided direct input back to the user. We're also implementing a secret rider-type program where we can monitor exactly what's happening and not happening without any unbiased to it. The other key part of all this has to do with the current project manager, has really developed a relationship with many of the dial-a-ride users that is very personal, and he knows all of the, all of the customers and all the drivers very personally, and he's able to, he has certainly developed a relationship. So those same elements will be included into the dial-a-ride system, so that would be direct comment available to that. In addition to that, we also have implemented a email system and some technology that will improve all of the customer response opportunities for residents and the drivers to really have some direct feedback. So there are a number of features for doing that.
Okay, and, and as you look at this method of feedback, is there, are we sure that we have the appropriate vehicle for people that have different types of impairments, so there's ways for, for everyone, all of the users, regardless of their issue, that they have a convenient, easy way to express their opinions and bring their feelings forward?
Absolutely, and what has not happened in the past will happen this time through the ambassador program, or through the advocate gentleman who will advocate on behalf of the disabled, and those that are less likely to speak up, because quite frankly, many of them are intimidated. So this provides a forum for them to really speak directly to the, to the city and to the contractor about what's working and not working. And there are many services that seniors and disabled are not aware of in terms of advantages that they will become aware of based on our outreach and our ability to connect people with the service advocate for the MV and the city. And this type person will be at the transportation center as well, so you'll constantly have some interaction opportunities.
Okay, and, and this person will be, will be available by phone, by landline?
Well, this person has some contractual requirements to be part of the whole process in setting up public meetings, to meet directly with seniors, to do a number of things, but there's also the, an ambassador, a volunteer-type person at the transportation center that's available to hear directly from the resident.
Okay, all right. And the other question is, there routinely, we hear, we have questions about certain, certain days, certain evenings, certain times, when there's, when service is just not available. Are those, are we looking at ways, recognize this, in this economic environment, I, that's a tough question, but it ways to fill certain gaps on weekends and what have you, where there may not be service available, to, to address and accommodate to the extent possible those folks that need the service?
We certainly are. Part of what we're doing is a complete review of the operating schedules, making sure the connections are in place, the drivers are fully aware of where they need to go. But another really important part of the dial-a-ride is to encourage advanced reservations as much as possible. The more type of advanced reservations and letting seniors know that they can make a reservation ahead of a schedule, much further than they are now, will improve the efficiency of the program, and overall make everyone's on-time performance far better. There are also provisions in the contract that require MV, the proposed contractor, to achieve a certain level of customer on-time performance. If they don't meet that, then, well, Roy and I will be in touch again in terms of making sure they meet a certain standard, and they've committed to doing that.
Roy, did you have a comment?
We're also looking at numerous funding avenues, such as, I'm going to give you some, some of these acronyms, the JARC and the New Freedom Act. There are funds that we're looking at that might be used in the future for, to fill some of these unmet, or open areas right now, these gaps that you're talking about. So we are looking, and it is a, as you mentioned, it is a tough economic time, but we are looking at these different avenues for funding.
Well, I think we all recognize that this whole public transportation area is, to say it's a work in progress is an understatement. I feel, and in discussions that we've had with our neighbors in Simi Valley, and Moore Park, and unincorporated areas in the southeastern Ventura County service area, the all, the final answer to this whole thing is a regional transit authority. Smaller vehicles, greater frequency, all of those types of things, and that, that can only be accomplished with a regional agency and a uniform funding source and what have you. And each, each time we talk about it, we, we know it's there, but it's just, it eludes us because of the geography that we deal with and the population we're dealing, someday it's going to happen, and eventually that would link up with Gold Coast, and the county would have a, a regional transportation, and bring this accumulation of Vista, and local transit authorities, and dial-a-rides, and bring it all together and make some sense out of it. But that's, that's a story for another time. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Then we do have speakers on this. First speaker is Audrey. Audrey is the first speaker, followed by Kevin Clicka. And please give us your name and city of residence.
Hi, good evening, council members and everyone here. My name is Orgy Fehluga. I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks. I also have a joint ADA card from Ventura County and LA County, and I do want to say that since Angel became the manager, I greatly, 100% appreciate the service that I have been getting. It's been easier. When I've had problems with drivers, and things were very upsetting, he's heard the good, the bad, the ugly, and everything in between from me, believe me, that he's probably tired of hearing from me on some of them. But what I did find is that he listens, and he listens to the driver, and he tries to do things to please, well, not to please everybody, but to get to the bottom of it to solve the problem. And I think that he's fair, and I know he does, he does try. And I've seen, I went to a meeting where there was not being respectful for my walkers and other things, and after I spoke with some of his drivers, some of them seemed to be like a difference in attitude. So hopefully, this could carry on to everybody else. I also wanted to say that one day I was sitting near a bus stop, I was sitting on my walker because I was tired, and one of the drivers from Thousand Oaks Bus Company stopped and asked me, "Are you okay?" And I said, "Yes, I was tired of waiting," and they says, "Do you need help?" Now, I know very seldom do you get that, or would you get that from anybody. But like I say, since I found, and I do need to say this direction of Angel, that with some of the drivers, and even for Thousand Oaks, I really greatly appreciate it. And I know on the dial-a-ride drivers, I always used to have a driver that constantly would speak on the cell phone with the earpiece. Well, it's taken a while, but now that driver, no more do we see or hear him speaking on the phone, and I've hear from other people as well. I know they try to pick us up within 45 minutes or less, and sometimes it gets extended, but sometimes we have to understand too, if a van broke down, or something happened, and if it gets too long, believe me, they hear me, and they try to get as much as possible. And thank you for allowing me to say this, and to say how I feel about how the dial-a-ride is going. And I know they're trying to work on this for everybody, and everybody that I know that has spoken with Angel, you know, to help him to do this. So thank you.
Thank you very much. We have, please step up and give us your name and city of residence.
Good evening, Mayor Clancy, city council. Mr. Mitnick, my name is Kevin Clicka, Chief Operating Officer and President of MV Transportation. I reside in Vacaville, California, up near, right in between San Francisco and Sacramento. MV has been a proud partner with the city since 2004. When we took this operation over, we immediately improved productivity, safety, and on-time performance, and we are very proud of those results. I'm honored to be here today with staff recommendation to rehire and continue this partnership with MV. In the last five years, has MV been perfect? No, we have not. We've had many managers turn over in the last five years, and because of that, we committed Angel through this term of this contract, and we recommended a $50,000 penalty if we leave. And that was our commitment to make sure that situation that was not working during the last term continued this time. With the new dial-ride transportation service called Trapeze, the technology program, there was a concern that things did not go well. But we've worked closely with the city with this transition, and we expect there will be no more further problems in the future. In fact, we implemented this program up at Gold Coast and Oxnard, where we started that operation about six months ago, and that implementation went flawless, and we're very proud of our services. Our new proposal has many innovative and enhancements that our last contract did not have. As Graham said, it has a technology to monitor fixed route programs and on-time performance of our dial-ride service. And these are web-based programs that we will, that we will be providing, that Graham, Roy, and their team can see at any time where the buses are to make sure we're meeting the needs of the customers. We're going to be providing 14 new buses. The current dial-a-ride buses are an average of seven years old. The 14 new buses include three compressed natural gas vehicles that we will, we believe will help with the improvement of the service that we give our citizens and our passengers. We recommended in our proposal that we have a productivity guarantee. What does that mean to the city? That means the number of passengers that you're demanding, we are promising we will not charge you more. That will ensure that your dial-ride budget stays within what we bid, and that helps during this economy time. Our proposal includes higher wages for our operators. In the last two, three years, our operators were underpaid, making much less than local similar jobs in this region. And right now, we're giving a $1.50 raise, which will help put them where the other drivers in this region are. We have increased training for our drivers, which includes sensitivity training for our dial-a-ride operators, to make sure they're treating our passengers with respect and understand the concerns and needs of those passengers. I give you my word as president and COO that we will keep our commitment and provide the services required, and that we commit to, to the citizens of Thousand Oaks. I thank you for being here today. I hope that you agree with staff recommendation. If you have any further questions, myself or my team will be available for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, hang on just a second. Ms. Bill De La Pena has a question for you.
Sure.
Good evening, Mr. Clicka. I, first of all, I commend you on your, on the changes and the proposals that you have made. You mentioned sensitivity training that obviously does help in, in helping the drivers to deal with our seniors more respectfully. Do you also offer safety training in making sure that the bus drivers, as was mentioned tonight, are not constantly on their cell phone talking?
Correct. We have, there's several things we've done for safety. Our program used to have 92 hours of training for a new driver. We've raised that in our new program to 118. In addition, we've added, and we provided it earlier, but we're enhancing it, it's called a DriveCam system. So it's a camera on the buses that have a continuous program that if somebody hits a speed bump, it's kind of like having a road supervisor on the bus, so we see what the drivers are doing. We are very, very strict, and I think one thing I really respect about Angel and what I've seen from the drivers and dispatchers, and just so you know that one of the, there you go. Angel is a manager that came about a year ago, and he's really got out to the community, and I think as our passenger said, he's listening to the clients and the passengers to find out what they're doing. So to answer your question, we do a lot of things for the sensitivity. We also discipline when necessary, and our qualification background checks help to try to weed out some of the drivers who aren't best for this type of service.
One would think that during these tough economic times, that one would be very glad to have a job and be on their best behavior. So it also helps to have a $1.50 an hour increase. Thank you.
Just add to that one question. About a year and a half ago, when we were trying to recruit one driver, we would get one applicant. Now, when we're trying to recruit one driver, we get 10 applicants. So we're able to screen better and get the best drivers for our passengers. Thank you so much for your question.
And thank you again.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council. My name is Dwight Sayer, and I'm MV's Community Relations Manager, Consumer Advocate, Goodwill Ambassador, Mystery Ambassador, Mystery Shopper, and our ADA and Access Board Specialist. It's great to be here. I'm also proud to be part of this team that's going to partner with the city of Thousand Oaks in providing these very important transit services. My responsibility to assist Angel in exceeding the expectations of our passengers, and also where possible, include them in the processes that affect the systems that they ride. I also am, am proud of the things that we have implemented. One such implementation was in, just up the road in Oxnard. I just completed the second round of Transit Town Hall meetings that concluded very successfully, and we would hope to very soon implement the same such Town Hall meetings and enhancements to our passenger communications and outreach here in Thousand Oaks. One other thing that I like to, to encourage, and because it's near and dear to my heart, is working with our transit agencies to encourage my fellow disabled to explore all of their transit options. Sometimes as, as I've experienced with my fellow disabled, we sometimes get tunnel vision about our transit options, and, and I like to encourage our agencies and our passengers to explore the fixed route opportunities, because I can tell you, as a blind traveler, using the fixed route enhances my independence considerably, and, and there's nothing more than I enjoy is, than helping some of my fellow disabled improve their opportunities for independence. With that, I'd just like to say thank you for the opportunity of being here tonight, and I look forward to working with the city of Thousand Oaks and our fantastic MV team in making this the best system it can be.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have Nathan Smith and Leland Peterson, both of whom have said that they are here for questions. Would you like to come down and address?
I'm MV's Regional Vice President. I support Angel and the local team. I live in Southern California. Mr. Smith lives in Camarillo, so we're both available nearby to support the program when needed, providing the senior leadership, and basically we're available for any questions that you may have.
Yeah, I have, I have one question. Where did the suggestion to use a secret rider come from, or is it one that's been widely used in the industry?
It's something that's used, not, not all the time, but it's, it's growing in, in frequency. It's something that Dwight has been definitely advocating since he's been working with us for the past five or six years, so it's something that, that we've, that we, that we included in our proposal this time.
I think it's a great idea. Other industries have used it quite a bit, very successfully. Thank you. Any questions to these gentlemen? None? Thank you very much for being here. That is the end of our, our speakers. Any comments or motion? Mr. Tuchelat, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll move the staff recommendations, one, two, three, and four. That doesn't take a resolution or anything, does it? Just move staff recommendations, one through four.
Okay, thank you very much. Please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Mayor, Mayor Glancy, if I could real quick, now that that item is behind us, there was a, a cost increase in, in this, in this go-around. I want council to know that we're working hard to try to bridge that gap. We do have a strong possibility of getting some of the economic stimulus funds for the purchase of these vehicles. It's not a done deal yet, so the, the agreement that was just approved is the agreement that stands, and that has MV providing all the vehicles. They know that we're participating in this process, or if we are successful, we will end up coming back to council, because some of the vehicles will be city-owned, but that will reduce our costs also. So I just wanted to let council know that that, that is in action as soon as we know from the federal economic stimulus bill, whether or not we are going to get those funds, we'll certainly let council know and be back before you.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins. Appreciate it.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Glancy and members of the city council. The proposed offer before you is to approve a retirement incentive offer to employees in the sum of $20,000 as retiree health savings account. We're also requesting an appropriation of up to $400,000 from various funds in the 2009, 2010 budget. In order to accept the incentive offer, an employee must retire by December 31st and commit to that retirement date before May 1st of this year. If this offer is approved, the city would limit the incentive to the first 20 individuals committing to a December or sooner retirement date. The proposed offer would require that one position be held vacant for each retirement incentive accepted. Based upon an average cost of salary and benefits of $100,000 per position, if 20 employees accepted the incentive, the potential savings could be up to $1.6 million during the first year. Review of a possible retirement incentive was listed in the gap closing strategies presented to the city council on January 27th, 2009. The proposed structure of this retirement incentive plan was presented to the Finance Audit Committee on February 6th, 2009, during a discussion of gap closing strategies. Approximately 30 positions have been held vacant during the last year in an attempt to avoid more drastic cost-cutting measures such as pay cuts, forced furloughs, and layoffs. A retirement incentive in the form of an RHS plan would allow employees to commit to retirement, knowing the city will provide additional support for post-retirement healthcare. If it is determined that a position vacated by retirement under this incentive plan cannot be left vacant, the city will give priority to in-house promotions or transfers. In that manner, the city proposes to hold one position per retirement, either by freezing the retiree's position or freezing the new incumbent's former position. Staff is proposing the retirement incentive, if approved, be offered to those employees who are 50 years of age or older and have 15 or more years of service to the city of Thousand Oaks. To accept the incentive, the employee must retire prior to December 31st and must file a letter of resignation with the Human Resources Department no later than April 30th, 2009. This offer would be extended to employees in classifications represented by TOCIA, Toma, or SMA. The incentive would not be offered to council-appointed positions, executive managers, or temporary hourly employees. The proposed RHS plan would consist of the following elements: $20,000 city contribution into an RHS plan for each retiree under this incentive offer; withdrawals for qualified medical expenses are tax-free; earning on the funds are tax-deferred; the funds may be used for healthcare expenses for a participant, spouse, or qualified dependent. At death, if money is remaining, it can be transferred to the surviving spouse and/or dependents for their healthcare expenses. The city currently provides $435 per month towards retiree medical insurance. This amount does not fully cover the least expensive medical insurance premium for an employee with a spouse. The amount of $20,000 could equate to three years of out-of-pocket medical premiums and full dental coverage for a retiree and their spouse. Qualified medical expenses under this plan include insurance copays, long-term care insurance, out-of-pocket medical premiums, dental insurance premiums, vision insurance premiums, COBRA premiums, Medicare supplement premiums, and services exceeding insurance plan limits. The city has conducted an aggressive succession planning program over the last four years. The purpose of this effort was in large part due to so many of our employees being of eligible retirement age. We believe we now have a sufficient number of employees ready to assume supervisory or leadership positions in the organization. Any positions vacated by this retirement incentive, which we determine must be filled, would be filled internally during the first, during the next fiscal year. Additionally, once the potential retirees are identified, there will be time for cross-training before the retiring employees leave service. We surveyed 103 employees with 54 responding. The survey explored two areas: first, interest in participation in a pre-retirement and post-retirement employment program, and secondly, retirement plans and the importance of unanticipated healthcare costs. Findings from the survey were as follows: 80% were, were interested in short-term post-retirement employment; 85% were interested in serving as a mentor to their successor prior to retirement; and 82% were willing to assist in post-retirement transition. The importance of the pre-retirement and post-retirement commitment is due to the potential loss of historical information and expertise as the number of long-term employees retire. We would like to encourage those retiring under this incentive to actively assist in the education and mentoring of their successors prior to retirement, and if needed, to work with those successors during the first few weeks of their retirement. 9% of those surveyed planned to retire within one year; 35% planned to retire in one to five years; 30% have delayed their retirement plans due to the current economy; 82% stated that healthcare costs are important to them in determining their retirement date; and 41% stated they would retire sooner if they had access to additional funds for post-retirement Human Resources staff surveyed our 15 labor market cities and special districts to determine if retirement incentives were being offered. Of those surveyed, only the city of Ventura has offered a retirement incentive. The city of Moreno Valley and Riverside County has implemented a two-year service credit to early retirees through CalPERS. Cost for this service credit is spread over 20 years, and the city's PERS rate will rise within two years of the implementation. Staff feels that the RHS plan is a superior incentive as we are able to pay the cost of the incentive immediately without increasing our future PERS rate. We also reviewed current retirement incentives being offered around the country to help determine an appropriate amount, and those are listed for you on the slide. Staff recommendation is to approve the recommendations, and staff is ready for questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Mr. Fox?
I don't have any questions. I can just convey to the council that, that there's a number of cities looking at programs like this in order to deal with their, their fiscal challenges that they're having, as the report outlines, up to 1.6 million. Is that what the cost is, this thing goes the way it's planned?
The first year, it would be 2 million after that.
Right. So I'll move recommendations, one through four. I'm sorry. The, one and two. Thanks.
Any questions? Any comment? Okay, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hickman. Okay, Mr. Mitzi, you're doing marketing for Thousand Oaks Civic Arts Plaza, I assume.
Good evening, Mayor Glancy and members of the city council. On April 22, 2008, the city council moved to direct the Community and Cultural Services Director with oversight of the city manager to convene an ad hoc marketing committee to begin development of recommendations for enhanced marketing for the theaters. Community and Cultural Services Department budgeted to be enhanced with an initial $30,000 and an option for additional funding requests to return to city council if necessary. The ad hoc marketing committee held, held a series of meetings and made eight initial recommendations to the city council on December 16th, 2008. The city council approved the following recommendations: to enhance the Thousand Oaks Boulevard marquee reader board; to install the Ticketmaster Arctic System; to install six additional display cases in the circular drive; to increase Lakes and Oaks Mall display case poster program; to advertise Civic Arts Plaza on the back of Thousand Oaks Transit buses; an additional page in the city newsletter commencing this summer; to include a programming question in the city's community questionnaire; and to develop an RFP for a marketing consultant. The first seven recommendations are currently in progress. You may have noticed that there are new posters at the Oaks Mall. The marketing consultant RFP has been put on hold pending assessment of the other current marketing recommendations. Tonight, the ad hoc marketing committee and Board of Governors are making, making two additional marketing recommendations. The first is the Thousand Oaks Boulevard Banner Program, and the second is the motion graphics video brochure for the 2009, 2010 season. The Thousand Oaks Boulevard Banner Program would consist of 30 full-color banners featuring pictures of future performances with a tagline, "Arts Plaza." The banners will be displayed on street poles on Thousand Oaks Boulevard for three months from August, September, and October, both east and west of the Civic Arts Plaza. The city recently upgraded the city website. One of the upgrades was a media player capable of webcasting videos. Currently, the Civic Arts Plaza media player is webcasting an interview between Patricia Jones, President of the Alliance for the Arts, and Frankie Avalon. Frankie Avalon was a celebrity host at the Thousand Oaks Arts Festival and graciously agreed to be interviewed to promote the Alliance Buy a Seat program in the Cavali Theater. This is an example of-
My name is Patricia Jones, and I'm President and Executive Director of the Alliance for the Arts, and we're here in the Fred Cavali Theater of the Thousand Oaks Civic Arts Plaza with celebrity ambassador Frankie Avalon. Welcome back to the Fred Cavali Theater, Frankie.
Thank you. It's nice to be back again on this side of the stage.
Yes, I'm sure it's a different perspective.
Yeah, it really is. I mean, you know, when you're onstage and looking out, of course, you know spotlights and all that stuff, you really don't see that much. You know there's people here, but looking at this, this theater here is absolutely beautiful.
It is a beautiful-
I don't think there's a bad seat in the house, is there?
No, there isn't. A lot of people comment on that. The acoustics are phenomenal.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, you can tell-
The Alliance Frankie Avalon Buy a Seat program has been playing for several months. The ad hoc marketing committee and Board of Governors are recommending a motion-based graphic video for the 2009, 2010 season brochure to be developed simultaneously with the season brochure and begin playing in August. Synovative is a Los Angeles-based production company that specializes in motion-based graphic videos for theaters and performing arts centers. Although a Thousand Oaks Civic Arts Plaza motion-based graphic video has yet to be created, we do have a sample of a Synovative motion-based graphic video from a theater back east that will give the city council a sense of the impact such a video could have on the Thousand Oaks website media player, TOTV, and local cable channels. The ad hoc marketing committee and Board of Governors recommends that the City Council approve the Thousand Oaks Boulevard Banner Program and a Synovative motion-based graphic video for the Civic Arts Plaza website media player, TO-TV, and local cable channels. The cost of the banner program would be $6,500 for the 2009-2010 season, and again, $6,500 for 2010-2011. The cost of the motion graphics season promo would be a range of $14,000 to $24,000, depending on the extent of the video, for the 2009-10 season and additionally for the 2010-2011 season. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Mitzi, are there any questions? Mr. Gillette?
Thank you, Mr. Mitzi. So in round numbers, what we're looking at is an investment in this marketing program of around $40,000?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions? Ms. Bill Delapena?
Mr. Mitzi, good evening. Could you clarify the banner program? It's already, obviously, in operation, and if you could just clarify for me why there is council approval needed to participate for this particular recommendation?
The council has entered into an agreement with the Thousand Oaks Boulevard Association for a banner program, giving them permission to work with nonprofits and other groups to hang banners. They approached the theater department and proposed the theater participate in the program and gave us a series of, outlined a series of options. The one that the Board of Governors felt made the most sense was to produce 30 banners, and that's the cost, is the $6,500, and that these banners would be displayed for a three-month period in August, September, and October, simultaneous with the publication of the season brochure in the beginning of the season. But the theater enterprise fund would have to pay that $6,500 cost for the actual printing of the banners.
And is there an additional cost for displaying the banners, or is that free?
I think that's the total cost, the $6,500. I don't, that is the proposal, which is in the report. So that would be the total cost, $6,500, for 30 banners.
Okay, and the cost that is mentioned is, of course, separate from or does not include item number 8, which is the RFP for Marketing Consultant?
Right. After discussion, we felt that it would be best to delay that until we saw the impact of some of the marketing recommendations that we'd already made, and then, if needed, we'd come back to the council at a later time.
I'm glad to see that, because as I recall, last year, that was one of my concerns, is expending money for the RFP for Marketing Consultant, and I thought that perhaps we were duplicating efforts. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Ms. Irwin?
Is the, I guess, the bog, are you gonna, how are you gonna determine the effectiveness of these two items? And can we look at the graphics promo after one year? Does it have to be a two-year commitment, or could we look at it after a year and look at how, you know, how well it worked? Because it is actually, I mean, I can see that it could entice a lot of people to come and watch, but it's a, is a big expense.
We certainly could do it for one year. It is not a two-year commitment. The recommendation is to budget it for two years, but we would not make a two-year commitment with Synovative. We would do it once to see how it worked. It's difficult to trace, when you're doing a variety of marketing initiatives, you're advertising in the newspaper, and you've got a season brochure, and you're doing motion graphics on the website and on TO-TV and banners, it's difficult to trace outside of anecdotally what you hear in the lobby and in the box office. And we do really try and ask people how they heard about shows. Now, the subscribers, of course, are regular patrons who re-subscribe, so we pretty much know that they're coming because they had subscribed before and they're renewing. But for single-ticket buyers, we really try and find out how they heard about it, and it's often through a neighbor, or they see it in the newspaper, or very often, they get our brochure, and they will pick three or four things that they are interested in during the year. And they may not get tickets right away, but we'll see people walking up to the box office months after the brochure has been mailed, with the brochure in their hand, just sort of reminding them of the shows that they're interested in seeing.
Well, so my suggestion is maybe to revisit at least that part in a year and look at, you know, how, what is the quality, how effective you think it is, and maybe even look at whether TO-TV could take it on after a year. And, you know, there's a pretty big range in the cost, so maybe look at the cost in a year or two.
We certainly would do that.
All right. So-
Yes.
Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and make the recommendation, the staff recommendation, with basically what Mr. Mitzi and I just talked about.
No, you didn't. Okay.
Reevaluating, or at least looking at how effective the program is and whether it could be done in-house after a year, and what the cost was for the first year.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Fox, may I clarify? You did not have a motion on the floor. I didn't think so. Okay, if there are no comments, the motion, please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you very much. And 12B, Disabled Access Appeals and Advisory Board Appointments. As is mentioned in the write-up, I was unable to attend because of another commitment that was last minute. So Ms. Irwin, you want to do the report?
My recommendation is to reappoint the incumbents Brad Gillespie and Sheri Phoenix to the Disabled Access Appeals and Advisory Board, beginning in February 2009. That's the motion.
Right, thank you. Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
There are no follow-up reports of meetings, conferences attended by council members, so Mr. Mitnick?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, by way of follow-up, we heard a Speaker under public comments make comments about the copper curtain, so what we'll do is we'll have our Finance Director, John Adams, follow up with him and let him know what the status of that is. On the fire agenda item, we neglected to point out, the first recommendation was to continue to work on several of the other enhancements, so staff is going to go ahead and do that, even though not technically directed. Okay, by way of upcoming announcements, upcoming meetings, the next council meeting's on March 24th, but I do want to remind the council and the public that tomorrow night, on March 11th, here at the Civic Arts Plaza, the Boulevard, Thousand Oaks Boulevard Association is hosting a public meeting to provide more information and to receive input on its proposed specific plan for the Boulevard. That'll come to council to initiate the EIR process later in the year, but the Boulevard Group is using space here at City Hall, and there's information on the city's website for that. And next week, three council members, the mayor, council member, Mayor Pro Tem Dennis Gillette, and council member Jack Irwin will be going to Washington along with myself and our legislative analyst, Mina Leba, to go to the National League of Cities Conference and also lobby for funding as it relates to the stimulus package for the community. The next council meeting's on the 24th, one public hearing dealing with the revising speed limits on Lynn Road. Council recall, the Lynn Road Committee worked on that for a long time, so the actual code amendment to adjust some of those speed limits comes to council on the 24th. And then, on March 31st, at the end of the month, there'll be a public hearing on the Home Depot project proposed for Hampshire Road, and that'll be the only item on that agenda on March 31st. That is it. By way of City Manager follow-up and announcements for upcoming items, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mitnick. I have one announcement that I want to just share with those in the community that are unaware. Jill Letterer has been selected and accepted the position as the Executive Director of the Thousand Oaks Westlake Village Regional Chamber of Commerce. Ms. Letterer will be a tremendous asset to the organization, and we're very fortunate. We will be returning to closed session in just a moment, but tonight, we will be adjourning our meeting in honor of three very special people. Our first adjournment is in memory of Jeanne Huberth. Jeanne passed away on February 1st, 2009, at the age of 85 years. She was a native Californian. In her younger years, she worked at the original Andecamp Bakery in Capital Records in Newbury Park. When Jeanne married, she became an Army wife, where she traveled and lived abroad while raising her five children, eventually settling in Thousand Oaks in 1964. Jeanne was active in many charitable organizations, and to name just a couple, Manah, our local food bank. In 1978, Jeanne helped to finance the city's first food bank on Crescent Way. Another cause close to Jeanne's heart was supporting the National League of Families, an organization established to support the families of killed or missing-inaction soldiers from Vietnam. Jeanne joined this organization after her young son, Eric Huberth, a U.S. Air Force pilot, was shot down in 1970 over Cambodia. As Jeanne's children commented, Jeanne is at peace. She is now able to be with her son, Eric. On behalf of our City Council, I send our sincerest sympathies to the Huberth family. Our second adjournment is in honor of Ventura County Sheriff's Deputy Michael Murray. Michael's parents, Sharon and Steve, were longtime residents of Thousand Oaks and now live in Agora Hills. He was a graduate from Westlake High School, where he played soccer for the school's athletic team. Michael joined the Sheriff's Department in 2002 and was known for his energetic, conscientious, and hard-working personality, as well as his outstanding sense of humor. After Michael's graduation from the Ventura County Criminal Justice Training Center, he was promoted to Deputy Sheriff in 2002. His first assignment was to the main jail in Ventura, and then transferred to East County Jail. In November 2008, Michael began his patrol field training in the City of Thousand Oaks. On behalf of the City Council, we send our deepest condolences to the family of Deputy Michael Murray. We know the loss of their young son is tremendous. You can be proud of Michael. His decision to become a law enforcement officer conveys his interest in caring for the safety and well-being of others. As an aside, I'd like to comment that the city was well-represented with the presence of Mr. Mitnick, Ms. Irwin, and me to convey our condolences to the family. Our final adjournment is in honor of Sid Hamilton, a 42-year resident of Thousand Oaks. Sid was an owner of courtesy Chevrolet for 41 years. He opened the doors to the first auto dealership in the Thousand Oaks Auto Mall in 1967. Sid was a member of the Westlake Rotary and an active, generous supporter of our community. He contributed both personally and through his business to many charitable organizations in our city. The YMCA pool was just one of the significant contributions. Sid and his wife of 49 years, Mary Hamilton, raised four children in our community. We would like to send our sincerest condolences to the Hamilton family. They have been a part of Thousand Oaks' history. And again, as an aside, Sid Hamilton was a personal friend of mine for quite a few years, and I will say, he was always a great devotee of the City of Thousand Oaks and a very, very strong American, so I personally will miss Sid tremendously. With that, we're adjourned until our regularly scheduled meeting of March 24, 2009.